Thank you for your patience as they were set to start the show. Okay, welcome everybody to our last meeting of the year. Right? Thank you everybody for coming. Thank you for wearing your masks. Thank you for participating in our meeting. And I really want to wish everybody a very happy and merry Christmas. Right? So going forward with that, please stand for the Pundallegians.
I Pundallegians to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, I'd like to open up the meeting with public comment. If anybody has a public comment, please raise your hand. I'll address you and you can come forward. Has anybody signed, Martina?
Yeah, Victoria.
Okay. Victoria, in your front row, come on up.
There's a sign-in sheet. There seems to be a lot of people. There's a sign-in sheet right over there.
Please, Victoria, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and then you can start. We ask that everybody limit their comments to three minutes or less.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Victoria Polidoro, I'm here on behalf of 6384 Mill Street LLC to address item 15 on your agenda, which includes a road repair paving bill. Absent from that bill was work that was to be done at the parking lot at 6376 Mill Street. For those of you that don't know, in January, the village had to do some work in the easement area on the property. And because it was winter, the village entered into agreement that said they would restore the property and add a top coat when weather permits. You know, the whole summer went by. We raised this issue several times with the village and PW. It's now December, the potholes are not fixed and they're growing. And so we just wanted to bring this to your attention and ask that you promptly address it along with other road repair issues.
I don't know if it addresses by numbers. Yeah, I'm sorry.
This is next to Amsterdam. It's the easement that we have over there. We tried and tried and tried the last 90 days, called six paving contractors, and it's really, it's a crazy environment right now. We tried and we, we had someone lined up, we thought, and they didn't show. And they did some patches for the water department, but not for the wastewater department. So we've been trying.
Okay.
We even paid a deposit to a contractor, I don't know how, many months ago, to do the work.
We've been exercising best efforts to get it done.
Okay. Because, you know, we receive complaints sometimes from tenants and the condition just to cheer me up. So perhaps we could talk offline about other ways to get it done.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your attention.
I can contact you. No problem.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Next.
I want to be sure I'm having a letter myself and several folks to go to the letter and sort of follow up to 6 Mulberry. And I just want to summarize it.
Sure. Please, Victor, go to the microphone.
One other just, I feel like I have to be a hacker to find that folder where the public comments are. Can I get put on the 6 Mulberry sub-page? I could send an email about that, but it's hard to find.
Just that manual.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Victor Britton. I live on South Street. The group of us want to thank the board for conducting a public comment section on 6 Mulberry Street and appreciate you have committed to an open and transparent process with public input. Many village residents that spoke raised significant concerns about the publicly available details of the proposal and the unusual overlay requested for a single parcel. The core of the proposal is to convert the building and a small portion of the 1.4 acre site into 13 market rate aged restricted apartments, with the remaining property subdivided for development. Any consideration of the proposal outside of current zoning laws should only occur after full completion of an update of the entire comprehensive plan. The potential harms from the proposed overlay are too significant to be considered in a piecemeal fashion. Put simply, considering the overlay request without the benefit of a complete and balanced process and the updated demographic data would take the comprehensive out of comprehensive plan and undermine its very purpose. The main points we are emphasizing, while Duchess Shepherd has portrayed the proposal as benefiting aging in place, the proposal is, in reality, to create a market rate apartment building. As was noted by an elder care expert, the proposal does not include any features or amenities designed to permit aging in place, nor can it be considered affordable housing for the local seniors that actually need options to remain in Rhinebeck. The village historian has confirmed that 6 Mulberry Street building is not contributing to the historic district and is in fact listed as an intrusion on the U.S. National Register of Historic Places Inventory Materials. These documents cite our village historic district as among the most cohesive, best-preserved historic environments within New York State. We should not be altering our laws to specifically preserve a building that is clearly documented as an intrusion to the village historic character. The suggestion that Duchess Shepherd should structure its request as an overlay to the district to permit the proposed development and avoid spot zoning was apparently made by village planning board members during a public meeting available online. The suggestion to use over 55 as a way to gain support for the building also came from a planning board member. The proposal would dramatically increase density in the village historic district, significantly intrude upon the surrounding streetscape and adjacent residents with added traffic, noise, light pollution, as well as continuously illuminated parking lot dropped in the middle of the historic district. When asked, developers stated that the taxpayers might assist with the expense of extending the village sewer infrastructure for this project. The board should not change laws, which took many years to determine, in haste, nor without well-playing the comprehensive balanced input. When anyone is unwilling to develop a property in compliance with existing zoning laws, we trust our village officials to adhere to an open holistic process to ensure any development benefits rather than harms the village. The tail should not wipe the door. Given the property's prominent location in our historic district, only Duchess Shepherd will benefit from a rushed and piecemeal review process prior to completing the comprehensive plan process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's the lady.
Can anyone address why the AP was scrolling?
Because he was pushing on the computer while you were speaking.
I'm sorry?
Because Victor was pushing on the computer while you were speaking.
He was leaning on the laptop and he advanced the screens on our presentation. It had nothing to do with what he was talking about.
I found it very distracting, but.
Hi, John Rossi, 53 Violet Place. Let me start by wishing everyone a happy holiday. And I'd like to introduce my friend Joyce.
I'm Joyce Meisinger, One Manor Road. And the reason why I'm here is I had a question at a tree commission meeting in August about what was being sprayed over the Landsman Kill on Prospect Street. I'd heard after the tree commission meeting, I was assured it was biological and I would answer it, and I did not receive an answer. And then subsequently found out in October that there was questions about other areas being sprayed. And so still waiting for an answer and some clarification of what was being sprayed and where.
So just by background, Joyce is a close family friend. Joyce, my wife, both are nurses and I would also like to, I won't embarrass her, but Joyce is a contact tracer who's been working endlessly on all of our requests from the state, and I appreciate that she took time to be here this evening. Joyce knew that I was involved along with some other residents relative to concerns about pesticides that had been sprayed. And when she, actually it was Thanksgiving weekend, she said, here's what I observed. It was during the summertime. The timeline kind of fits, the location fits. And Joyce's concern, my concern, was that perhaps the same glyphosate-based chemical that was used in the park may have been sprayed onto the, until the Landsman Kill. I have, I did send an email out a couple of times to make copies for members of the board. And as Joyce mentioned, this was discussed in the morning, the midst of a August 4 tree commission meeting. And so in short, we're just seeking the response to the emails that I sent asking, and again asking this evening, do you know what was sprayed in the Landsman Kill in the north? Thank you. I'm sorry. I'll call you back in a second.
All right. Thank you.
Right. Oh, good. Okay. God, I don't even remember what my head hurt. So basically, I think as Joyce mentioned, she brought this up at a, she said she saw somebody spraying something at the, in one of the parks. And one of our highway department members said, oh yeah, I think we're using something that's biologically available. And that was pretty much the end of the discussion. We don't have a time. We don't have a, you know, other than that, that was about the full extent of the discussion that happened within the tree commission. So, you know, we are, do you want to go on here?
No.
Okay. So at this point, I mean, I don't have a lot of information. I have the, I have what our highway department member told us. And without much more, it's hard to kind of go into what's what and what's where.
Okay. Anybody else? Hi, Marie.
My name is Marie Tombeany, and one first part I have in coming to these meetings is to let the public know on record that the mayor's declaration that the northern portion of Prospect Street is a private drive was a decision made in private. There was no public hearing on this matter. He has declared that a street used by the public, maintained service complied by the village for probably 50-plus years, is a private drive. While some of my FOIL requests are outstanding and pass the appropriate time period, I did receive from the mayor a copy of the February 2021 Hagberg Attorney Letter that was sent to the village attorney in the November board meeting. I spoke with the fact that Hagberg removed 220 feet in length and 40 feet in width of grass and street pavement and replaced it all with tar, raised the height of the street, sloped the new street to the right, and created a runoff from the left side hill into the public street and my driveway and property. One piece of this February Attorney Letter is a two-paragraph exhibit that Hagberg believed was composed as a request to reduce a tax assessment on Prospect Street. This exhibit addresses in great detail the water issue using phrases like low elevation of the properties, the need for basement pumps, water seepage, the need for a tremendous number of yards of bank run. Yet according to the Hagberg affidavit, when Hagberg discussed with the mayor the work he was planning, the reply was no permit is needed, which such exhibits description of a severe water drainage issue on Prospect Street. Why no permitting, no engineering plan, no site plan, no planning board review, no public discussion? I understand that the village is a bronze-certified climate-smart community, looking in part to restore ecosystems and to encourage private property owners to not spray pesticides. Yet apparently, without any public opportunity to comment, this removal of sod and grass was allowed. Was this done as a favor to Hagberg, whose house sits atop the site of two large formerly active greenhouses that were pumped full of pesticides for many years? Such radical landscaping ignores excerpts like this from the internet. How does grass affect the ecosystem? Lawns are far more than just looks. Maintaining a healthy thick lawn also benefits the environment. Unlike hard surfaces such as concrete, asphalt, and wood, lawn grass helps clean the air, trap carbon dioxide, reduce erosion from stormwater runoff, improve soil, decrease noise pollution, and reduce temperatures. The village may be striving to certify at higher levels than its current bronze certification and perhaps to come eligible for state grants to further fund projects. So I ask, when this Hagberg states in his affidavit, he discussed these extensive landscape changes with the mayor, and this per Hagberg letter that states these plans were cleared with the relevant village and town officials, why did none of these officials question plans that are out of character to the historic nature of the street? Plans that leave my property soggy in inches high water? Plans that may adversely affect the ecosystem?
Marie, three minutes. Time's up. Can you summarize?
Summarize? I have a picture of what my driveway looks like, flooded with water. And last month, I spoke about the fact that they take their yard waste to West Chestnut Street, while now they're taking it from 17 Prospect to Number 5, where it can blow all over everyone else's property.
Marie, I appreciate your diligence in this. I know many of your FOIL requests have requested documentation from our attorney. And as we have told you repeatedly, when you come in, and we appreciate that, we don't mind. But we have sent all of that for the attorney to respond to. And when we get the response from the attorney, you will get it.
I understand that.
So we are very dependent on your request, on information from our attorney to give to you.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I think it's also important to state for the record, because you've been very diligent every time you've been coming up here, that from the review that was done by our attorneys and your neighbors' attorneys, the property line hasn't changed. And I, the Department of Transportation has never considered their driveway to be a village road. We've never considered their driveway to be a village road. And I think it's unfair to characterize that the village just unilaterally stated that this road is somehow other than what it has always been. And I think it's important to note that for the record, that you're mischaracterizing, unfortunately, what appears to be the fact of the matter. And there are easements that prove it, there's deeds that prove it, there's maps that prove it. And so, you know, we're happy to look into the water issue, and I'd appreciate, you know, a little bit more detail on, you know, building permits that should have been gotten or applied for and received. But in terms of whether or not the driveway is a public road, that has been answered fully, and it has never been a public road. So I do think it's important to state that for the record.
And I would just like to say that I believe it's a highway by use, since the public and the village have maintained it for many, many, many years. And I also gave to the mayor the New York State Department of Local Roads Transportation listing that shows the full length of that street listed on those papers.
And all that has been given to our attorney, and our attorney has still come back to the same resolution, that we have not maintained a road. Plowing does not justify maintenance of a road. Right? We've not done repairs to road, but.
Land topping, picking up surfaces on it.
And that information was given to you. That does not justify a village-use road.
I haven't received that information. All I received was the affidavit. I haven't received any details from the attorney.
And I said, I appreciate your diligence, Marie. We have given all of that to our attorney to respond to. When we get it, you will get it.
And again, that addresses maybe whether it's a public or a private road, but how about the fact that they did expensive landscaping that caused water issues?
When was that done?
October 4.
Okay.
They did a landscaping on their property. Just for the record, they did landscaping on their property.
What they plan to be their property as.
Yes. So it is their property that they did landscaping.
And they don't need any permitting or?
Not for landscaping.
Not for landscaping.
Not for tearing up a whole road and taking all the grass out?
It's their property.
If it was their driveway and if it was the right-of-way that was previously paved, then yeah, they can do that.
Marie, I can send you a list of plants that would, or I could send it to your neighbors, plants that do soak up stormwater that could be helpful if they are amenable to doing more planting in the area.
I don't think they can because they put hot asphalt down and they put stone on top of it.
Put along the edge.
There's the ledge left. They put railway ties up.
I know we, we have a list of roads that need to be repaved, and I'm sure that the street is on the list. It's, we just can't do everything. We can't do everything at once.
Depending on which list you look at, the first part of Prospect Street is on that road, not the back part.
But it used to be.
No, I don't mean their piece, the neighbor's piece. I mean the little spur that goes up, right?
There's a little, a little tongue there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Or keep long.
I mean, we just can't do everything at once.
I'll pick my pictures back if you can.
Thank you, Marie.
Thanks, Marie. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Purple Mars.
Good afternoon. Your name?
Patricia.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. Thank you all. I would like to move for our presentation tonight. We are in year three of our CATFELM project with Marist College and the Environmental Science class that is run by Dr. Feldman and Professor Chris Alguizzi, who is here with us this evening to present the results of what they've done for this year in moving this project forward in terms of our desire to manage stormwater runoff and everything on the Landsman Kill, for that flight. Thank you, Professor Alguizzi.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I am Professor Chris Alguizzi from Marist College, and I have some of my students here with me this evening to talk to you all about the project in its third phase, its third year. This is work that we've been doing that Dr. Feldman started with the environmental science students, looking at the watershed that involves the Landsman Kill and looking at some of the flood conditions that occur in the village and the area. And we were very excited about what the students have to share this evening. And on behalf of Marist College, I want to thank Mayor Bassett and the trustees for allowing us to have this collaboration, because not only do you guys get benefit out of it, our students get tremendous benefit out of doing this type of work and being able to put this type of work on their resumes. So thank you very much for this opportunity for them, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for Mayor Bassett and Trustee Bertozzi and the rest of the village of Rhinebeck for having us tonight. We really appreciate that. So we are proud to present to you the fall 2021 version of the Rhinebeck Asher Dam Capstone Project. My name is Anton Sacks. I'm from Austin, Texas, and my team was responsible for installing the tipping bucket and the rain logger.
And my name is Leo Goldschmidt, and my team was responsible for installing the telemetry box. So just to run you through our agenda real quick, we're going to talk about our process, which includes going to the site, the equipment we worked with, and the installation of set equipment.
So like I said, my name is Anton Sacks, and this is the rest of the team who worked on installing the tipping bucket and the rainlogger.
And before, my name is Leo Goldschmidt, and this is the rest of my team that installed the telemetry box.
So just to give you a little bit of an overview about what the project entails, so essentially the main purpose is to expand on the research to see if the Landsman Kill poses a potential flooding threat to the citizens and residents of Rhinebeck. So like Professor Alguizzi said previously, this is the third phase of a project, of this project. And the first phase and the second phase, they developed different things. So previously, they developed ADAS, which is the Asher Dam Alert System, which is essentially, we'll show it later in our demo, but it shows different water levels and the data that we can pull from the equipment that I'll show you later. So my team's role, the tipping bucket and the rainlogger, was one to not only install and configure the tipping bucket and the rainlogger, but also take the data that we received and place it onto the Asher Dam Alert System.
My team's job was to configure the telemetry box and deploy it onto the field, design a database to be able to store the data from the data loggers, and then integrate the ADAS system with the data loggers.
So our initial research included taking a trip up to the Rhinebeck Village Highway Department, which is the site of the installation. So it was only a 30-minute drive up north, Route 9, from there. So it's easy to go there and kind of, you know, install the equipment and plan for the project. So after we did some site planning, some organization for where we were going to place the equipment, I drew up a map of the site. I did not go to school to be an artist, as you can see. But we kind of, I kind of drew up where I thought the best place to place all the equipment would be, and also the wiring underneath the bridge and kind of the configuration for all of the equipment.
So this is the STS telemetry box. As you can see, it contains three devices within it. The one on the top left is the STS telemetry system. The one on the top right is the Digimotum, and the one on the bottom is a 12-volt battery that runs the, that powers the whole device. So the STS telemetry system, it contains the Solen software, which allows us to integrate the data loggers into the, into the project. Second is the Digimotum. It is a cellular modem which uses a SIM card to connect the Solen software to the ADAS. Now, so before we received the SIM card, we tried other methods to connect the software to the server, but none of them really worked out. But in the meantime, we did develop the database to store the logger, to store the data from the loggers, as well as develop ADAS more to be able to display that data. Now, after, after a bit of time, we finally received the SIM card on November 9, and that allowed us to move forward with the project in significant ways. We were able to set up the modem, set up that connection. And then we finally were able to integrate the Solen software into the ADAS site. And on December 7, we were able to go out into the site, the Landsman Kill. And here you see my team hard at work trying to make sure all the equipment is in place. As you can see, so in the first picture, it shows how all the wiring and the tubing to allow the, to allow the tipping bucket to run into the telemetry box. And here you see this third picture, which is the telemetry box successfully installed with all the devices inside connected. Here, my team is doing some finishing touches to make sure that everything's correctly installed. And yes.
Just in case, maybe people don't understand what a tipping bucket is.
We will get into that as we go through the presentation. And here I'm going to.
There we go.
And here I'm going to give a little bit to explain the tipping bucket.
I'm sorry. It paid me to do that.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett, for the perfect segue into that. So with the generous donation of the village of Rhinebeck, we were able to look at the documentation of the High Quest Solutions Tipping Bucket, which was all in that little QR code right there. So we kind of got a good idea of how the pieces came together, how the rain fell into the top of the tipping bucket and hit the sensor to, you know, gather data. So once we kind of understood how the tipping bucket worked, we moved on to the Solens Rainlogger Model 3002. So we kind of got a good idea of, it's this little device right here, about how the data was stored on the rainlogger and how we could wire it into a local computer to be able to take data off the rainlogger and visualize it in some way, shape, or form. So once we understood how all the equipment worked together, we were able to deploy the tipping bucket and the rainlogger for a test run. This is at our apartment dorms at Marist. So it was actually kind of perfect the day that we deployed all the equipment, because the next day, as you can see right here, we received 194 millimeters of rain. And we depicted that with a nice photograph right here. So once we knew that the tipping bucket and the rainlogger worked nicely together, we were able to install all the equipment at the Landsman Kill on October 11. And just to kind of run you through some of the configurations, so in the top-left corner up there, that pipe is the level logger. So essentially, it reads the level of the Landsman Kill. And then if you follow that orange wire across underneath the bridge to the bottom-left picture, that's connected into the rainlogger and the level logger, which is where we took the data off. And then moving on to the next slide, that wiring continues onto the pole right here, and this wiring right here would be for the telemetry box installation. And then moving on to the next slide, that wiring continues onto the pole right here. And this wiring right here would be for the telemetry box installation. So this is a final picture right here that we took a couple of weeks ago. It's just showing the proximity of the tipping bucket to the telemetry box, and that we were very happy with the installation and that they were nicely connected with each other. Okay, so now I'm going to hand it over to Robbie, who's going to take you through the Asher Dam Alert System, and he's going to show you the updates that we made through it, made to it throughout the semester.
Okay. So like Anton said, my name is Robbie Perone, and I'm going to be taking you through the Asher Dam Alert System. So this is a site that we inherited from the previous groups that have worked on this project. So a lot of what you see on this page, it was passed down to us, and we didn't really, this wasn't our part of the project. So what our part of the project was, was fixing up a little bit of this part, but then also adding this button up here, as you can see my mouse is on here, to view some graphs. So we implemented some graphs over here to nicely show the data that it doesn't just, it's not just all a bunch of numbers, and it's nicely displayed and everything. And this is for the rain logger, as we've been talking about with the tipping bucket. So this is all that data. And then the level logger, which shows the the level of the water. Right now, nothing is coming off of the the actual data loggers that are actually set up over there. This is all test data that we're trying to just visualize some sort of data until we can actually get actual data coming in. And that is the next phase of our project, was just to store it in the database and then collect it and show it here. And we'll be giving options to better control the data so that people can actually control what they see and data from what point. So I'm going to hand it back over so that they can finish up this presentation.
So I'd like to give an update on on Robbie's statement that we're working on showing the data from the database. As today, we do have the database fully set up, and we do have the data loggers showing data and pushing data into the database. We're just working on some final last steps to to push it out into the public. But we learned quite a bit working on this project. This is a fantastic sort of project, working with the Village of Rhinebeck. Rhinebeck, it allowed us to come together and put ourselves to good use as a group of professionals rather than students. And it allowed us to utilize the agile methodology to effectively and efficiently delegate tasks between the two groups. And in conclusion, we inherited this project, like Robbie said, from many groups before us, and we wanted to continue their hard work. So we had two teams. We distributed the work among each other, I would think, pretty evenly, and we were able to successfully deploy and install the data loggers and the telemetry box. Thank you very much, everybody, for listening. I'd like to give a special thanks to Dr. Richard Feldman, who can be here with us today, Professor Christopher Alguizzi, James Erlanger, a joint study student at Marist, Robert Lynch, an IBM representative who worked with us, and Chris Mitchell from the New York State D E C. And we wish everybody a happy holiday. And if it's okay to open up the floor to any questions, we would like to give you that opportunity. So thank you.
I'd like to make a statement first.
Yeah, of course.
So for those who don't know, we started this project three years ago in regard to the flooding. It started off with the Environmental Department and Policy Group, right? And now we've expanded it. And through the cooperation with Marist, it's expanded into now the Software Design Organization. So we're continuing to work with Marist on a real-life, real-application project that is beneficial to us. And I say it's beneficial to us because in the last three years, we've had to work on managing the flow of the dam. It's quadrupled, it's doubled every year. In year one, it started out one time. Year two, it went to twice. This year, it went to four times. That we've had to manage the level of the dam. And for those who live along the dam and know the potential of the flooding, recognize the fact of what we've been doing. And this is a manual process to be able to go out and know when to do it. I am so grateful that this project is moving forward, that it'll give us some real-life data to be able to predict when we should lower the dam, how much we should lower the dam, right, and for how long. And this is, this is, this is a tremendous value to you, our village residents, to be able to to this. So I thank you because it's real.
Thank you.
And climate change is real. And as you can see from the data that we've had to do, it's had an impact on our lives. And by working on this project, we can help mitigate some of those disasters coming forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
When you get to the point where we'll be seeing live data from the sensors being pushed up to the amazing visualizations on the web, how often was the incremental upload of the data that will be visualized?
All right. So right now, we have the data logger set to collect data continuously and log the data every 15 minutes and then send that every hour to the home server that's back at Marist College where we maintain the database. So the website is also housed there, so it would be refreshed hourly. We're looking at if that's the right frequency or it needs to be more frequent. My vision, my vision for the future would be to have students work on a system that's reactive. So it's not static, that when it sees there's a rain event and it starts seeing data increase, that it increases the refresh rate to the website as well. But that's a whole piece of work that we'll have to design in a future project.
All right. Thanks. Thank you very much. Well, well done. Well done. The next on the agenda is a bid for mitigating bias training for village personnel by Trustee Bertozzi.
Okay. So we had put out an ARTP for a firm to work with the Village of Rhinebeck staff and and department heads and elected officials to offer us a series of facilitated trainings to work with us on anti-bias and diversity, inclusion, and equity work. We received two bids. And I would like tonight for the board to consider approving the bid by the inclusion next firm. I, I, I think the two quotes are are up online on the cloud, but I was, I was really happy to see both of these proposals. I think they're both very qualified. I think the inclusion firm is maybe a better fit. They do this every day, all day. And they have a big cohort of staff that they work with. And the other proposal, well, really compelling because it's, it's actually from a local professor who lives in Rhinebeck. And her, her academic research is on bias, so social science study of bias, which is really interesting. And she does occasionally give workshops, you know. I think the proposal came from a place of her really caring about Rhinebeck and wanting to work with us on through these issues. But, but I, I think I would prefer to go with the outside firm, but I wanted to make a motion, and then we can discuss. So I want to make a motion that we accept the inclusion firm bid.
Do I have a second?
Is there a cost or? Yes.
Bert, can we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee. And I'm going to abstain because I've worked with one of the organizations for a year.
Okay. So there, yeah, we budgeted $6,000 to $8,000, and the inclusion proposal is within that.
Okay.
The other proposal is a little bit above. But she did say she'd be, she'd be flexible in working with us. But she basically proposed her standard rate, and that came in above what we budgeted for.
I have a question that's not particularly relevant to either one of these specific proposals. But if we're all five of us in a room together working on this, does that make it an open meeting?
I think, I think not because it's, it's a training. You know, it's an informational session. We're not making decisions that affect.
Okay. I have to double-check because I'm pretty sure anytime you guys know it.
No.
Okay. Well, let's not have that argument now. I think we need to look into that. Because I, I don't think it's possible to do this kind of work in an open meeting situation. So.
If it is open, we get to talk shop, too. We can talk.
I know, right? Yeah, we can make all sorts of decisions. But, you know, in all seriousness, you know, this kind of work is very vulnerable work, and, you know, it's hard to do when you're on camera. So I do think we need to consider that. Sorry, I should have raised it before now. But I did like the idea about how this is not just a one-day thing, it's a one-day training, but there is an aspect of that they can come back and continue to work with us. So I did like that.
So it's four sessions, nine hours? Is that what we're going to be involved with or?
Is this, this is all remote? Any questions?
They could come in person. Or it could be remote. I, I feel pretty strongly for this type of working. We want to do it in person.
Do they have a preference? I know they're trying to do work during COVID, and so they're willing to do whatever we want them to do. Right.
And once again, can you give over the scope of who would be involved in this and the first?
Right. So the scope is to really take a, pull together the leadership team of the village government. Think of the government as a workplace. That's really what we're talking about here, is how do we, as a workplace, make sure that we are open to diversity and inclusion as coworkers, as managers? And so we will be, the, the people involved would be department heads and elected officials. And not everyone, but the idea there is if you're a manager, you're a department head, you have a team that reports to you, you take some of these trainings, and you hopefully apply those in your management of your staff. I mean, the other, the other thing is, it's, we wouldn't be able to get everybody involved logistically.
Village has to keep going.
We have to keep running.
Yep.
And I'd like to call for a vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I abstain.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa. I'm going to keep the floor open for you.
Great.
Compost pilot resolution.
All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a presentation here.
Yep, you got to turn it back on. Just press exit on the bottom part. There you go. No, you're good.
Oh, why it's so tiny? Yeah.
You probably just hit the green.
Let me just go into present. Okay, great. So hello, Trustee Vanessa Bertozzi. Can I take this off? I'm so excited to be talking about this tonight. It's been a long time coming. And, you know, this is a conversation about compost, right? And you might think that making dirt is something of a really simple thing, but it's actually quite complex. And so this is the reason why we did a feasibility study with partners from RIT's Pollution Prevention Institute that kicked off this past spring and finished up this fall. We submitted the feasibility study to the board last month. The public is welcome to check it out. It's up on our website, climatsmartrhinebeck.org. I'm not going to get into the details of it because tonight is about action. It's about taking that research and actually putting something into place. And that action is really coming from our community. And I want to acknowledge our compost subcommittee tonight. Some of our members are here. Mary Burns, Dorna Schroeder, and Catherine Kelepper. And not here tonight, Corinna Borden, Caroline Morton. So a huge thank you to the community members who've been working nonstop on this for a number of months. And our history with Rhinebeck, considering compost goes back to 2017, if not longer. So this is a conversation that is now ready and primed and ready to go. So tonight, I'm going to be talking about what we want to do as we move into the action phase. So our goal, as part of this climate smart efforts, the Village of Rhinebeck will develop an engaging and effective public food scrap diversion program that reduces greenhouse gases in landfills and builds healthy soil, ultimately becoming a model for others in our region. So the big context here is New York State is really looking at the climate change impacts of the greenhouse gases created by landfilling food waste. It's a really big problem. There's going to be more and more legislation happening and regulation around this in the coming years. There are other communities like ours that are really trying to be leaders here and prove, create some proof of concepts of how do we take care of this waste. Scope of the pilot. So we want to work with 100 households in the village. This is roughly 10% of households here in the village. We've also engaged with five to 10 businesses in the village district, restaurants, cafes, food stores. So during our feasibility study, we, we talked to these folks and tried to understand their needs. When you add up all of the food waste, it's tantamount to 1.7 tons of food waste per week. And keep in mind that households represent just a third of that. One of the things that our compost subcommittee was really adamant about is we have to understand if we're going to be doing more harm than good. Are we defeating the purpose of diverting food waste if we are hauling it hither, thither, and yah? So we're really pleased to see that our RIT partners actually did the math. And here you can see that even taking into account the transportation of hauling food waste, you still have a net sequestration of of carbon when you're composting versus letting food waste and rot in a landfill. That produces methane, which is an even more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. So basically, what we have going on is the anaerobic versus the anaerobic chemical processes. So beyond greenhouse gas, and that if climate change issues, there's a number of other co-benefits with composting. You're going to reduce the amount of garbage that your household produces. The average American household, 30% of their trash can is compostable material. So maybe you save on trips to the transfer station or the number of pickups you have from your private hauler. It enriches the finished compost, enriches your landscaping, even your potting plants. And we really feel like this will be a point of pride for Rhinebeckers to be able to talk this up. And it does get us poised towards our Silver Climate Smart Certification. And P.S., it makes your trash can less stinky if you're diverting your food waste to a separate container. One of the things our, our compost subcommittee really wanted to understand, what are going to be the deal breakers? If we go and launch a pilot, we want to make sure it's going to be successful. What are the things that are going to really pose blockers for folks? And so that's why we settled on a pilot that's going to be able to handle not just plant-based food waste, but also meat, bones, dairy. We also felt like it would be tuning ourselves in the foot if we were asking people to change their behavior, but then take a break for winter, start back up in the spring. So we want a year-round program. And of course, we want something to be cost-effective, low maintenance, low complexity. And of course, we want something to be cost-effective, low maintenance, low complexity, and eventually scalable. So here's my pitch. We want to do an agile pilot so we can round test this project and see how to scale up. We want to focus on gauging participation. Can we get 100 households to sign up? And then will those households actually do it? That's the question. So I'm proposing that we partner with a third-party food scrap collection partner and who would process it off-site into compost. Again, 100 households, each would get a five-gallon bucket, and they could drop it off at their convenience at a centralized location, probably right over here in the parking lot behind the little hall and the police department. That one, that 100 households is tantamount to about 12 32-gallon lidded containers. And then the partner would pick it up once a week and cart it off. Businesses will be treated a bit differently, right? Think about Terrapin and the amount of food waste they're producing versus Samuels. So we're going to encourage our business partners to have their own private contracts with a hauler. And then we will collaborate on the community engagement pieces. Here's a timeline. So I'm hoping I get approval tonight so we can announce this in the new year and build our participation list, hopefully a waiting list. And then launch in March with food scrap collection, run for six months through August. And note that in July, that's when the DEC grants come out, are due for any food waste related grants. Here's some startup costs. So buying buckets, providing the buckets and some education as the first point of entry for participants, other marketing-related costs, like some stickers or promotion materials, tabling, maybe at the farmer's market, stuff like that. And then we want to provide finished compost to the participants to kind of tell that whole closed-loop story at the end. So we have the startup costs. And then what the pilot would, the financial model is that it would be basically us paying a municipal subscription rate that would offset the cost of our participants. But they would also pay in. So they're not getting it for free. They have to pay in. I actually think that's a good thing because it means they'll take it seriously. But it will be a subsidized rate. So it will be less cost to participant than if they were to privately do this with a compost hauler by themselves. So the grand total that I'm asking for tonight is $5,500, 1,000 of which we've already budgeted for this fiscal year. So I'm, we'll get more into talking about the numbers, and I have some quotes for us to discuss in a little bit. Quotes from Ozone, the community compost company. I also requested a quote from Welch, just to see what does a standard, you know, private hauler cost for this sort of thing? But unfortunately, I haven't got a go back yet. So before I leave the podium here, I want to give a special thank you to Catherine, who's here tonight, who is a new volunteer for our Climate Smart Task Force and is a graphic designer who is volunteering to create a campaign to promote this pilot. She created a logo, Village Compost, really nice. It's kind of a twist on the little orange peel. You can see the V and the C. Again, this is all just draft. We haven't given her all of our notes yet, but I wanted to give a sneak peek because it's kind of fun. You can imagine this really being an engaging way to get people involved. And I'm not saying we're necessarily buying t-shirts or anything, but just to give you an idea. Yeah. You know, the graphic design and illustration of a project like this is really important because it does take a bit to pique people's interest talking about, you know, your garbage. But how to make it engaging and how to make it straightforward, illustration and graphic design will be really important. Here's the ubiquitous Subaru Forester. So that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Want to get into the quotes in a little?
Yeah, can we? Okay. So we've got two quotes. One is from Ozone. And Ozone is based up at Greg Farm in Red Hook. And she gave us a quote based on that 12 32-gallon bin weekly pickup of $360 a month. And add to that finished compost from, as part of it. The other quote from Community Compost Company, which is based out in Kerhonkson, where they also work for the farm, their quote was $725 a month. And their finished compost cost was a bit less, but they also included a $500 consulting fee.
Per month?
Uh, no.
Oh.
For a set number of hours. So I, I would make a motion. I think I have a resolution as well. I don't know if you want me to read that.
Go to your process.
Okay. Okay. So what I'm, what I'm proposing is that we accept the Ozone offer. And the reason why I'm excited about Ozone is because she is so local. And she's, she's, she's very invested in education about composting and food waste and would really be a great partner in this. I think Community Compost Company is also a wonderful company. They work with Town of Sogardies, they work with Hoboken. But they're a bit further away and they're a bit more expensive. The other thing that I like about Ozone is that her model provides a tiered subscription model for our 100 households. If you're a senior or a student or just someone who's living alone, you're $6 a month. Versus if you're a household of two, you're $8 a month. Household of three or four, $10 a month. Household of five, $12 a month. So that feels fair to me. That feels like something that makes sense. Whereas Community Compost is just a flat $7.25 for each participant, each household. The other thing to note is Ozone would be able to accept that meat, dairy, veg, bones in addition to plant-based, which is awesome. And if you have those food containers that are certified BPI compostable packaging, those could be composted as well. And so that's something that we heard a lot of feedback along the way, talking to the community and to the businesses. So I think, I think it's, I'm very pleased with that quote and I'd like to go for it.
All right, should we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Slavy.
Can I just get the?
All right, so now we go to discussion here.
Yeah.
Vanessa, just the amount, like, is this the 5,500?
Right. 5,500 total minus the, well, for Ozone, I, in my presentation, I said around 5,500 total, minus 1,000. But the Ozone is 42, 4,260.
And that includes the 1,000 that we already have budgeted for this?
No.
Oh, so it's 4,260 of 12 and 1,000?
That's right.
Okay.
And, and you know, like, I, I know we only budgeted $1,000 for this fiscal year, but I do feel some urgency. We have great momentum. I want to keep this rolling and I want to get it started. So that's why I'm requesting the additional monies.
So as soon as the board decides, passes the resolution, then we can do a budget amendment to, for the rest of the funding for the rest of the fiscal year.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So does Ozone, like, so let's say I subscribe to this. Do I then give her $8 a month? Or do I give Karen $8? Like, who do I give $8 a month to?
Right. That's another thing I really like about both these quotes, actually, is that they already have a robust web interface. So we don't have to manage payment processing for all of 100 participants. They would, we would basically have a sign-up for the pilot and verify those people are indeed in the village, how many are in your household. We pass that list to our partner. And then the households who are approved for a pilot would then go register through their website and pay through their website. So it kind of lessens the accounting burden on our part.
Yeah. By a lot.
I like that, too.
Yeah.
And have you had a discussion with our CFO on where to get the money from?
Yeah. We talked about something of this nature, a pilot program, that it would be appropriate for it to come from contingency.
Right. The balance is the 4,260, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So we would move that into the 5110 for compost line item. If the, if you want to do that as a resolution as well.
Any other questions? Comments from the board?
Sir, is there any way to ever be in the black with this program?
So if we were to get into the business of composting, right? We do create mulch from our yard waste. If we were to set up our own in-house composting site, our compost feasibility study recommended an aerated static pile system. You could imagine a world where we get into the composting business and we're creating a closed-loop system here in the village where people donate their food scraps to the program and then maybe they get a subsidized rate on the finished compost and we could sell that. Then it becomes a line of business selling compost to the public. Or if we have excess capacity, you know, taking customers from Town of Rhinebeck or from Red Hook, you can imagine it growing into a lot of business. But I think that's TBD if that's a business we want to get into. And I think we're going to learn a lot just from the six-month pilot and see, you know, gauge interest from the community and, and see how it rolls.
Is there like an expectation that at some point, this is going to be something that the waste haulers?
Right. And that's the other thing. That's a really great question, Lydia. Like, it's a little bit of a moving target because the environment we're in right now with the state is that you're going to be seeing more and more regulation of this form of waste. And I'm, I'm really actually hoping that they just make it required for our private haulers to handle organic composting. It's just a matter of time, I think. So this, what we're doing here might end up being a stopgap solution. We'll have to see.
You know, I don't recall, because we had a discussion about this with the, with the RIT people, but is there any way to incorporate this compostable with wastewater compostable at some point?
Yeah. That's another thing that we, we did take a peek into, but it's not fully built out in the feasibility study. And that is the composting of bio-solids from our wastewater treatment plant. And that's another possibility. Again, if we were to create our own composting site, that could be an aspect of it. Because that's another, it's another form of our waste that right now we're just sending away.
Which will?
Which usually means being incinerated or landfilled, whereas it could be made into beautiful compost.
And we'll talk about this later, but it's going to, it's getting pricey.
Yeah. And that's the, the other moving target of this environment is that more and more the landfills and incinerators are closing. And so we're going to, we're being held accountable now to what we do with our waste and trying to come up with a better way.
And if the first 100 people want to continue after the six months, is that a possibility? Or does it come to an end?
Well, I'm hoping it will continue. I mean, we'll, we'll have to see, right?
Okay. All right. So that's a TBD as well?
Right.
All right.
I mean, I understand this is a subsidy really to do the pilot, to gauge the interest. But at a certain point, we would have to move towards a more self-sustaining program along the way. So this is really to figure out what kind of, how much, how much engagement is there? That's what this is all about.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor of accepting Ozone for a six-month trial period? Please raise your hands and say aye.
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 Seems unanimous. Well done. I think we're ready for launch, right? Very good.
Thanks.
Okay.
Do we need another one?
Do we need the?
Martina, I'm gonna, as soon as you're ready for the next subject line item?
So the town clerk will be retiring. And the deputy town clerk has requested that we appoint her as the new registrar of vital statistics. I'm requesting that the board appoint Joan Winnie as registrar of vital statistics.
So moved?
Thank you for this. First, go second. Thank you, trustee Lloyd. Any questions?
Is this just how it works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The town clerk is different than the village clerk. Different roles, different jobs.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But the, the town is responsible for the vital statistics.
Got it.
And their current clerk is retiring.
Okay. So the town is, is the village's vital statistics place?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't, we don't record births and deaths.
No, we don't. We don't, in fact. Yeah. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next up is an open temporary position for our village of public work superintendent. For those who know, we've been without a DPW for a year as of December 10th. And there's been a lot of events and a lot of issues and a lot of need to make this, have this position available to the village again. So I want to introduce that subject again this evening to try to move forward to have a DPW-only position. Right? Previous was DPW, building, planning, and zoning. This is DT, DPW-only. And I'm liking, making a proposal to have a full-time temporary, word is temporary, village public works superintendent, essentially a DPW for six months. Okay? Our civil service organization allows us to have a six-month temporary position for this. And we are within that six-month window of going into our budget process. And that's the reason why it would be a temporary position until we execute going forward with whatever plans or whatever happens and how we get through the budget. So what I'm proposing is that we go out with a request to look for and seek a village public work superintendent. This is a non-competitive class within the village, within the civil service, which means those communities that have 5,000 or less, it's a non-competitive position. So we can advertise for that and then appoint that position if we so want to move forward. We all, there's a very, there's a civil service job description, which we posted out on the web. But we also get the ability to kind of amend that a little bit to meet our needs, to be able to satisfy what we need here in the village of Rhinebeck. I've been working as the acting DPW, as best that could be. And I will guarantee that it's not the best, right? I will tell you it's not the best because there is so much that goes on and only an amount of time to be able to do that. But I put together a list of things that I believe are really important to the village that need to happen to have this position, right? To be able to move forward. And I'm just going to, these are in no logical order. It's a random progression of my thoughts in terms of, and input from others in terms of what we need. And I'll just read these into the record of what we need, why we need a village DPW. As we all know, we have events going on in the village. Just one, last week, that event requires a lot of village staff and the coordination of village staff. So event planning, coordination of use of village staff. We have highway projects, paving, catch basins, drainage systems, all of that that needs to be coordinated and organized. We have to coordinate with the State Department of DOT for road striping, crosswalks, you name it. We have two major state roads that intersect here in the village of Rhinebeck. It takes a lot of cooperation and working with that. Approving purchase orders. Personnel reviewing schedule, personnel reviews, approving schedules, and doing annual reviews. Purchasing. If anybody remembers, this summer we lost two trucks, alright? Very catastrophic event. I spent a lot of time, went to help with Trustee Lloyd, but it was a lot of time to figure out how to purchase trucks and move forward, just so that we had a plan going into the winter and make that happen. That's just an example, but procurement issues are there. Maintaining our inventory of equipment. Recommending new equipment. Litigation. We've been, there's often litigation that gets involved into everything we do. If there's a water break, how to, you know, the notification and the repair and the coordination of water breaks. Sewage, same thing, our wastewater treatment plant, doesn't happen as often, but that can occur as well. Emergency response. We as a village need to respond and we have an emergency response team and on that emergency response team is our police department, our fire department, and our DPW. And that position is currently void. We have overseen daily and weekly operations of our village departments. We have communications with our CFO and our village clerk that need to go on a regular basis. And we need somebody to work with the CFO on budgets and monthly check-ins, right? So that's just kind of a, it's not limited to say it, we need a DPW for just highway or we need one for water, we need, this is all encompassing of what we need here in the village to be able to move forward. So I'm making, I'm making a proposal, I'd like to make a motion that we go out and seek a village of public works superintendent.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee. Okay.
Third, fourth, fifth.
So with that, I want to open it up in the discussion.
So, Ian, you know where I stand on this. It's a great idea, I don't see it as a full-time job. There's quite a lot of things that are done in that, in those areas that buy the, the leads of the departments, water, wastewater, by the trustees, me, and you know, I've been doing a lot with water and wastewater, you know, in the last year. And I expect to do that kind of thing. For example, you know, I got a job description for water and sewer superintendent, it's the closest thing I could find on the civil service and it is under a village heading. And this is pretty much what the water and wastewater chiefs do. Direct and supervise the operation of the water and sewer department, prepare requisitions for material supplies and equipment, prepare a yearly budget of water and sewer departments, assign work details to subordinates. You know, I've been helping the guys with that. I've said over and over again, it might be six, five to six hours a week as far as doing public works for water and wastewater. Every single person who's been a liaison, at least for water and sewer, in the last 12 years has done quite a bit, including you, including Heinz, who was your predecessor, including Wayne Reifenberg, who was his predecessor, including me, who was your successor. And you're talking about, Fenton did this within 20 hours a week. The difference between a 20-hour-a-week position and full-time with benefits is three times. So, for example, if we had a 30,
Twice.
Not with benefits and,
Oh, sorry, money, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so if we went out, we had 20 hours a week and it's $30 an hour, that's, you know, what is that? That's a thousand hours a year, that's 30 grand. And if you have full-time, it's times two, 60 grand plus benefits and payroll withholding, just three times. So we're jumping in big. And we've never had a full-time public works director and I don't think we need one. I think we should start out small and see, you know, see where we're at first. I think it's a good idea, I need a little help, you need a, you need a little help, a lot of help, and Rick needs help. I know that the, the street department needs a little more handholding because of the various and sundry things they do. And course events, it's, they're extremely busy, you know, with center clause and everything like that, but.
See, my only,
I have some serious reservations about a full-time job.
That's fine.
And I don't think we're substantiating it.
My only question would be, you came up with 20 hours a week.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I don't know how that 20 hours a week was derived because I don't know how much the previous person put in into this function on a, on a weekly basis, whether it could have been less, it could have been a lot more. And I truly believe that with the scope of the work that was done before, there was a lot of things that were left.
On the table.
On the table. In all, in all the departments, so.
Well, he did a good job.
I'm, I'm not going to get into questioning,
He's not here to defend himself, but I think he did a good job.
I'm questioning the amount of time that it takes to really do this and really do it effectively for the village.
So, we had had a building inspector, we always figured that was 20 hours a week. We brought, I was here when we brought Fenton in, we considered that about 20 hours a week. We considered the ZVA thing, the, I'm sorry, the ZEO, zoning enforcement officer, to be maybe 10, 12 hours a week.
But this doesn't include that, that's what you mentioned.
So subtract 40, subtract that from 40, he was doing 20 maybe at the most.
Again.
I've had a personal conversation with him a while back about what his, his burden was with water and wastewater. And he said, those guys know what they're doing, you know what you're doing, it, it isn't that much. I don't spend, he doesn't spend, he spent, he did not spend a lot of time in water and wastewater. We had an engineering report and the top engineer said, these two plants are being run very well. That's, that's demonstrated result. It was a full scrub.
We have, we have, we have great chief operators, there's no doubt.
And, well, thanks, Gary, but, you know, to, me too, I mean, I've been doing an awful lot of stuff with water and wastewater. But, and you did, and Heinz, and this is part of the deal. Why wouldn't trustees, especially, here's another thing. In the procurement code, we are supposed to, liaisons are supposed to approve public works purchases. So we, we're codified to be involved. If we sit in armchairs and we watch the village get operated, the money's going to go flying out the door.
I don't agree with that.
I don't.
By hiring a DPW, we're not going to stop approving DPW expenditures.
But you're going to be more detached from the process.
I don't think that's true.
We're changing the entire way the village, this, this is a huge move you guys are making right now. We're changing the, the entire way the village is organized. It was never organized this way.
I,
But we used to have a,
But we used to have a part-time DPW and so going to it,
That's fine, that's what I'm saying, let's,
But going to a full-time DPW just gives more authority to that position to actually sort of make sure that all the departments are doing what they need to be doing and coordinate with each other appropriately.
I think they're going to be sitting on their hands and, and frankly, you know, people are really hurting with property taxes. You're talking about three times the expense. We have a chance to save a little bit of money here and why don't we just, why don't we just stick our toe in the water, start with 20 hours?
We have six months, we have six months to try this out.
It'll, you're never going to go backwards. You started 20 hours and go up, this is what we did with Chrissy years ago. We, we had a part-timer and she got really, really busy, so we ramped it up. The, when we were interviewing with Karen, we thought it was going to be 20 hours and we brought someone in and it didn't work out, so then we went and got Karen full-time. Let's start, let's be cautious.
So there's also,
People don't have loads of money right now.
I would, I would argue that we did do it for 20 hours a week with Fenton and we needed more. He wasn't doing enough in that job.
I don't recall.
I mean, he wasn't doing enough in,
I don't recall that happening, I was here through it all and I, I don't remember seeing the, again, we, we had a scrub from the engineers for the, the water and wastewater plant had been running like Swiss watches, so I don't, it certainly wasn't there. The water is a 987 million, or $1,000 operation, sewer's 834, and highways 435. So if you want someone sitting around watching five people, you, you want?
It's not a five person, it's, okay, it's 10 people. And if you add up all of their budgets, it's almost $2 million. So you think that there's, it's appropriate to have a 20-hour-a-week person be overseeing 10 people in a $2 million budget?
There's hardly any,
It's really 14 people.
Four, okay, 14.
The highway, water, wastewater.
Right, when you look at what I view as the duty of a trustee in water and wastewater, and I'm, and I'm not going anywhere right now.
Yeah.
And what, what I view as the duty of the chiefs, and I just read you that they're, they're involved in purchasing, they're involved in, in operations, they help him with payroll, I help him with payroll, I mean, not payroll, but, but personnel. Look, why don't we just start slow?
Do we think it would be harder to find someone to fill this role at 20 hours a week? If it's temporary anyways?
I have no idea. I have no idea if we're going to find somebody who wants to take a temporary position.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna be hard to find anyone.
But this is what the civil service allows us to do. This was what I see as a need for the, for the village, having spent the last year trying to do it. And yes, you know, there's been a lot of issues, right? And a lot of personnel issues, you know, that needed to be resolved. And this person could help with a lot of that, but this list in itself is not directed at just water and wastewater. It's looking at the village. It's really looking at the village.
Gary, I look at your list and I, I didn't, you know, I'm not,
I know, I just, I just wrote it down, this is,
There's nothing wrong with your list, I just, I'm agreeing with you, I just think it could be done in, with 20 hours a week. If, if somebody spent a couple hours a day helping the guys at the street department, especially, this, you know, there's not, there's no public works going on during this season of the year, it's all about plowing. And, you know, Scott told me, for example, that he didn't use Fenton so much when it came to plowing, I mean, because it's like, okay, let's just go and plow. I mean, it, they don't require, are, are you okay with that?
I,
Lydia, I mean, they don't require that.
I think, I think that is understating the amount of work that Fenton did in the, in the highway department. I think it's understating the amount of work that Fenton did across the board, to be perfectly honest, but especially in the highway department. I just think it's understating it. I mean, given what I've witnessed in the last year, like the fact that there is no one who is between those guys and us at like,
I'm not arguing.
No, yeah, no, I know, you're not, you're not our,
You want me on the premise of having a, but let's not,
Yeah, no, no, I know, but, but the fact that that person isn't there all the time to like witness what's going on, to like, it, it's, it's become a huge problem with the guys. And frankly, it's become a huge problem with us, too. And like, and I hear you that, you know, maybe we could start part-time and go from there, but I think, I, I genuinely believe that it's going to be really difficult to find someone to do that.
There's, now, there's people that do these piecemeal things all the time. A lot of people have flexibility, a lot of people are doing this, there's a, there's a handful of people that just do this.
I know, everybody moonlights, but my concern is we just had a guy who spent a great deal of his time in all of sorts of villages, all over Hudson County, I mean, the Hudson River. And it, it, cleaning that up has been, at least for me, a great deal of my time in the last year. And, you know, and I've been helping with the DPW side of it, I've been witnessing what's been going on. And I think having someone, given how busy we are, who's not focused on this full-time is a mistake. I mean, I'm just going to put it that way.
You know, our budget's exploding, you're talking about,
Our budget doesn't explode.
Well, mine is, I, I'll talk, I'll talk about this later, but.
So I looked into the budget and Karen, sent out Karen to review where we are and what we have, right, and what we have in available funds. If you base it on a $45,000 a year job, right, we are more than well covered in terms of available funds without impacting our budget at all to do, to put this position into place.
But you're not going to get a lot of expertise for $45,000.
Yeah, and right now, I didn't bring that paperwork with me, the breakdown in terms of each budget line item, but it added up to almost $18,000 of available money that we have today. Plus, if we look at our plan overreach, we can just tap into $2,500 of each department to say that's their share of contribution to put into this department and we have this covered. So financially, we're okay. I wouldn't do this and break the bank. That's not my plan. My plan is to do this and maintain it within the budget.
For $45,000, you're going to get a working foreman, which is what we, we have a handful,
This is not a working foreman. And we don't need working foremen. We have chief water plant operator, we have a highway foreman. We're looking for somebody to bring the,
For example, Brian and Brian are so sophisticated and, and to get somebody that's, that's going to really help them in a more sophisticated level, not, not at $45,000.
But we don't need someone to run the plants, we need someone to, to manage the personnel. We don't, we don't need that level of,
The mayor's in charge of personnel, it's not that much of a time sink. It's a, it's the kind of thing that, you know, when we have issues, it's difficult, but it isn't a time, it's not a time sink.
Well, thank you for that, but it is a time sink.
Okay, well, thank you, because I work on this stuff, too, I mean, come on.
Yeah, and so you know how much of the,
Let's just show some humility, I mean,
Yeah, so you know exactly,
I said thank you for it.
If I have something, if, if I have to do stuff, it's not like my thumbs in a vise every time, it's part of the deal. It's public service, guys.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, public service, right?
If it's a, you said a six-month temp contract?
Right, and then we're going to be into the, we're going, during the budget process, we're going to have time to look at this and decide what we want to do.
But is, is it, are we required, are we required to do health benefits and all of that if it's temp?
Because it's a full-time position? Yeah.
It's a full-time, because it is a civil service requirement.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I definitely feel like, because I've been talking to our working foreman about this, and I know that Gary's caught a lot, but a lot of it's kind of spilled down to his position as well. And he certainly feels like it, not having somebody who is here doing that supervisory administrative stuff has really cut into his time to be in the field. Basically, we're staffed at the minimum amount of staff. And so, all the time that he spends specing trucks and looking at bids and calling around.
Personally, that, that's what Fenton was good for, was getting, is doing the procurement, getting bids and stuff like that.
And, and,
But also, you and I are the, we're, we're actually supposed to approve public work, so we can spend a few hours,
We still, we still approve it, but the point is, and we always will, but the point is that there are longer-term projects that people need to be thinking about. We have needs, there's going to be a big bridge project around the highway department, there's a big bridge project coming up in, across Route 9, we're going to have your water project. Even when it comes down to things like, we had an issue where we had some walkway that was badly installed, right? And even if, I'm, you know, I'm chasing, I'm chasing the, the, the engineers who are chasing the firm, who are, it becomes a long tail. If there was somebody to, first of all, see that it was done properly initially, that would have been really helpful, somebody knows what they're looking at.
The irony is,
And second of all, let me finish that, and second of all, having somebody who can really see these things through. We've got potentially the, the tree commission may be doing some planting along the state roads. It would be nice to have a relationship with the person at the state who's our coordinator so we could talk to them about timing and what we need to do to render it safe. I think there is more to the job than, than simply pushing or, or directing employees what to do, but that's a very important section of it.
It, it far exceeds directing employees, and that's what I said. This is not, this is not replacing the job of what we've hired experts to do. I'm not, this is not what we should be doing. We have great people to do that, right? But this is a level up, this is that interface to Karen, the interface to Martina, the interface to us as well.
Yeah.
You know, on everything that's, that's going on in a public works environment. I think the question comes down to, Grant said, the proposal is, I think the question comes down to, Grant said, the proposal is part-time versus full-time. That's really what it comes down to. I don't think you're objecting to, like you are, I don't think, from my understanding, you're not objecting to the position, you're objecting to the amount of time.
That's right.
So.
Now, could I just say one more thing about project? The irony is that projects, we, we actually have an engineer that actually does contract administration, they do, they do the engineering management, and they do all that stuff. It actually is more work for, for Karen, et cetera, than a public works person. The waterline project was very public, because it was about tearing up the roads and things like this. The, the two big projects I'm gonna have coming up at the plants are gonna be at the plant, you know what I mean? And that's gonna be really engineered, engineering-based.
Probably more engineering involvement, but.
The ben- the benchmarks are gonna be looked at by the engineers, approved, the invoices are gonna get approved that way, blah, blah, blah. And so.
To have that interface for us, Grant, I think is really crucial, you know?
We, we're small. We have about 2,500 neighbors, and, you know, I'm hearing that people are really strapped for taxes, and there's just so many budget items, and it's almost like, you know, you're spinning plates, and if you just let one just fly off from $30,000 to $90,000.
Again, you're quoting, you're quoting numbers that we're not even quoting.
Yeah, we're not adding.
So don't overinflate something that's not inflated like that.
Gary, I'm doing a hypothetical, you said 45, I said 60, but that's.
No, you just said 90.
With the benefits and the payroll and withholding. Or, how much, you wanna really, I mean, how much is healthcare for a family? What is it? $1,800 a month, $2,000?
Well, and it's currently already budgeted. It's currently already budgeted.
Yeah, but you still have a zoning department that we used to pay for through our public works person.
Uh huh.
And we are.
Uh huh.
I understand that, now, now it's like, public works plus zoning, it used to be all into one, one full-time job.
Yes, but I have structured the building, planning, and zoning office to not require that, so, you know.
I understand that, but still, that, how, how much is your, is our building inspector working every week? They gotta be putting in at least 20 hours a week.
So I'm pushing it forward, and I'm pushing it forward for eight, this is not because of the last week, it's not because of the last month. I've asked for, appealing for you and Rick to.
I've said over and over again, Gary, five to six hours a week. Don't look at me and say, I haven't been telling you five, you, I've been answering your question every single time, I'm not gonna get gaslit right now. I answered your questions every single time. I said five to six hours a week, every time.
And I asked you.
Don't gaslight me, then turn and look at him.
I asked you and Trusty Lewis for a proposal, and I've never gotten one. So I'm bringing a proposal forward, right?
Oh my God.
You stated your requirement.
Six hours a week.
You stated your requirement, but it never came forward as a collective, here's what we want. So now I'm bringing one forward. If you don't agree with it, that's fine. I don't have an issue with that. Right? But I'm bringing a proposal forward, for the lack of not happy one. And my look, and my look at the view is, we need a DPW. If the board doesn't approve for this, that's fine, I'm bringing it forward. Right?
I'm the person who brought the, who brought the, who brought these positions to the board, and the idea that we could have a temporary person was never, was never, this is not my identity, wouldn't even imagine that we could have a temporary person. So I was always looking at this as, we have a job description, we, you know, we're gonna need to move forward, and we have an opportunity, and it rose that opportunity to get a temporary position.
So, Gary, it's all conclusory. We have, we have a job description from civil service, Gary started the discussion out by saying, we don't have to follow it completely, we can take bits.
I said we could amend it.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually praising you for saying that, I, I don't know what Rick is saying, well, it's, it's because the job description's there its whole time, I mean, that's.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, when, in talking about what it is and what we wanna see done, we know this is it, we know what this is.
Start out slow, let's go with 20 hours, come on.
All right, so.
That's my position.
Here's what I'm gonna do, all right. I'm gonna table this to next month. And during the next month, I want everybody to think logically about their commitment, the time commitment, the work involved with doing this, and I'm gonna bring it back forward again next month, with same proposal, same thing, and we'll have the discussion, because I agree, this is the first time I'm bringing it forward, I'd like to have you guys review it, but I, here's where I'm at, we need help. Right? Whether it's full-time or part-time, I need that decision made. Right?
That's true.
So I'm asking the board for that decision, I'm tabling it till next month and putting it back on the, back on the agenda, Martina, for our January meeting, okay?
Thank you.
All right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're gonna move forward. Okay. Wastewater utility truck.
So I just need a decision on this truck, and maybe Karen can help me a little bit. We ran across the opportunity by utility truck, which I, I'm assuming it's still available, because it was the other day, or I haven't been able to talk to Brian, 'cause he's not in. Brian added some additional reasons for having a utility truck instead of a get-around truck, which was what was budgeted for. However, what was budgeted for, I believe, was $10,000 in principal and then $2,500 in interest, which over five years would actually accommodate both. Because we had, I submitted a bid last month for $56,900-ish. Brian's additional justification for having a utility truck instead of a get-around truck is that for tool and equipment storage, there's more storage in that, it's, the tools won't be loose, no need to climb into the bed to get, for, to get the tools, and they deal in heavy equipment. Additionally, I'd like to say that we will need a bigger truck, we will need a plow truck, and we have a plow truck now, but its lifespan might be another five or six years. So we also wanna get an electric truck, right? Electric motor truck. My presumption is that a lighter truck is more likely to be an affordable electric truck than a heavy-duty truck in five years. We're gonna need some kind of heavy-duty truck when our heavy-duty truck now dies, for both plowing and, but mostly for carrying tools and things around, and carrying pumps back to the, back to the plant and stuff like that. We're adequately budgeted, I think we have a better shot at getting a good electric vehicle in five or six years if we just buy this utility truck now.
So what would the electric vehicle replace? We're gonna have, you're saying we need three trucks?
No, I'm, I'm anticipating that the one that's six or seven years old now will be dead, will die in five years, and then we can replace it with an electric vehicle.
Which would be more like a get-around truck.
Okay, so, so.
If we.
Okay, should we have a motion, and then we can talk about it, or?
Yeah, we need a second. Do you have, you make a, you have a motion?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, do I have a second?
Second. I'm sorry, it's a 2022 3500, correct?
Dodge Ram 3500.
All right.
Bright white clear coat.
And the cost difference between what we had budgeted in this is almost 30 grand, right?
No, I mean, this is in the budget.
No, but what we had budgeted when we did the budget.
The price, the price difference between a 3500 and a Ford Ranger is, yeah, like, the list price on this vehicle versus the list price on what we originally talked about last spring, it was about $30,000.
I don't recall.
Yeah.
The only thing I have to look at is what we put in the budget, which, I mean, budgets that are about money, and it seemed adequate to buy this also.
Right. So remind me why Brian asked for a run-around truck in the spring, and now he wants a 3500?
I don't know that piece, I mean, he, he's obviously changed his mind, but we, we need two trucks, 'cause we're gonna have four guys, and they have to get around, and they've been using their personal vehicles.
No, and, nobody's denying that they need a truck, it's just that this is quite a truck for, you know.
Well, they're gonna need a truck like this, they have one, kinda like, what is it, a 250 now, or something, it's a pretty big, the other one is pretty big that they have now. I know we're gonna have two big vehicles for five or six years until the one big vehicle, but then we'll have this one for.
Great, but so, I, I guess my question is, why can't we buy this one when we need to replace the other one, and if they need?
Well, then we're gonna have two gas trucks, 'cause we can't get an, a electric get-around truck now. We're gonna have two gas trucks, so for the next 10 years, we're gonna have, we're not gonna have an electric vehicle.
So when I talked to them, they all said, listen, we just need a truck. Granted, they need a truck, right? But nobody except poor Brian has said, we need this truck. They all said, we just need a truck so we can, back to the original proposal, to get around with it. Can you get a bigger truck and do more? They said yes. Do they need a bigger truck and do more? It wasn't definitive answer that everybody is in agreement that they needed a bigger truck at that department, right?
Well, they will, they, they.
It's one person saying that, but the rest of the department isn't.
I think, I think, Brent, I think the five-year horizon is too long. If you said, look, the trucks, the, the big truck, the other truck's gonna be gone in a year, they're like, okay, that's it, but you're talking about another truck that's gonna function for another five? We have no idea what the, what the truck buying environment's gonna look like five years from now.
Well, if you think we're gonna have heavy-duty electric trucks in five years.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what we'll get, we don't know where we'll be. And so it just seems like a, a lot of, a five-year overlap between having two heavy trucks seems to be too much. That's my, that would be my, 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 my take on that.
And, I mean, and speaking of the budget, you just made a very compelling argument about why we shouldn't spend unnecessary dollars, and this truck.
Again, the budget's about money, and, and we put enough in the budget to buy this truck.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we have to spend it.
We didn't budget for this amount. When we went to the budget plan, we budgeted for a Ford Ranger.
And, and even if, like.
It's a number that fits, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I mean, like, you know, even if you budgeted $5,000, doesn't mean you have to spend all of it, especially if you don't actually need a truck like this.
And we got a $5,000 rebate.
Right, okay. That was a hypothetical, but honestly, this just. At one point, we were talking about giving wastewater like a Chevy Volt for what they needed, and like, they all pitched a fit about that, and, 'cause they were like, we need to be able to put something in the back, but like, what they originally asked for was a run-around in order to check meters. And, you know, we said, okay, well, if you don't want a Chevy Volt, then like, we'll get you just a run-around truck. Like, you know, a run-around truck is a very different proposition than a 3500, a 3500 borders on a commercial vehicle. And, yeah, I don't know if it's a dually in the back, but like, these are, this is a massive truck, and if they already have a plow truck, they don't need another one until this one is near the end of the list.
Forget about the plow, we don't even have to buy a plow for this thing, I'm just.
Yeah, I would not approve a plow.
I'm going back to the principle that in five years, and I, we have to have some vision here, are we gonna be able to find a heavy-duty electric truck, or are we gonna have no electric trucks?
I think in five years, the, the market is gonna be exploding with lots of electric vehicles.
And also, we have absolutely no idea what's gonna happen in five years, but the fact of the matter is, is we won't need this truck for at least another five years, and so why would we buy it now?
Even our highway department uses a Chevy Colorado. They haul stuff around, move tools around, move people around, go from here to there. So they, they, and they're the highway department, they use a Chevy Colorado.
That's fine, I, they could also use a, a utility truck, so you can put, you know, you don't, you, you don't have like pry bars and stuff flying, if you have a fender bender, pry bar is flying out of your, you know, your bed, if you have.
We could put a toolbox in the back.
Yeah, I think at highway, we had, we've, we've basically gone from five trucks, ten, and down to three, we've actually limited, been able to eliminate two trucks, some of it was happenstance, and some of it worked out, but the reality is, when push came to shove, a, a couple of well-tailored trucks is better than having an excess of trucks, and it seems like there is the truck that does the duty that you guys need, the heavy, the heavy, heavy hauling that you need. And, and as I said before, buying one for five years down the road seems to be a little bit too speculative, that's too much overlap, at least from my, from my point of view. And it seemed like having a run-around, a get-around truck, which we discussed in the additional budget season, that seemed like a really reasonable request, and it didn't, wasn't redundant, and that, I hadn't really, I guess, as Lydia pointed out, things haven't really changed, other than that some other departments, because of fires and such, have gotten some other trucks. I don't, I don't see the need has changing down there.
We even reduced the highway from, to get a 5500. We went downsized even on, even on the highway truck, so.
Well, let's not, we still need more time talking about it, if I'm not convincing, convincing you folks.
Well, let's stick with, okay? We have a motion?
I mean, one last thing, I, you know, I do give him, the guys a, a wastewater superintendent, and I give him a little deference to his decision, 'cause he knows his, his business better than we do. It's not a life or death situation, so my nod goes to him and what he wants to do.
And we're, three months from starting our budget process, too, all right? That we've gone through this far.
Do you wanna punt it for three months?
No, I, they, I think they need a second truck, that's my point. I think they need a second truck for, even when, even when the truck is not broke, they need a second truck for running around. I, I, I am convinced they need a second truck.
Okay.
What I'm not convinced of is that they need this truck, that's my problem, right?
Brent, I wanna say thanks for considering the, the strategy to move us towards electric vehicles, but I think it's, it's true that there's gonna be a lot more options coming on the market in the coming years, and if you, if you look at the amount of gas that such a large vehicle burns, it's, 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 it's too much, it, it's a lot. So that's my opinion.
All right, any more discussion? All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of purchasing a 2022 Dodge Ram 3500 with utility body for $62, $56,962, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Nay.
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 But we should, they should get a run-around.
Yeah.
I'm convinced they need that.
Bring us a invoice for a Ford Ranger.
All right, vacation buyout request. We have three vacation buyout requests, we have 35 hours for employee number nine, I'm gonna do these all together. We have 20, 132 hours for employee number 22, and we have 79.5 hours for employee number 26. These have all been reviewed by our CFO and within budget, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the vacation buyout request for employee nine, employee number 22, and employee number 26. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Trusty Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next, tree removal applications. Do you wanna do it?
I have them, I have, I have to get the right folder open here.
I have both of them here printed out.
I'll take it from there, okay. Thank you. So the tree commission met and examined two applications for pruning and/or removal. The first is at 25 North Parsonage Street. The commission suggested accepting this, of course, with the caveat that a certified arborist, insured arborist is employed. The second is at 80 East Market Street. These are two old nowhere maples, which are really in poor condition, this is part of the savagery inflicted by Central Hudson. And the, the board realizes that these trees are both in poor condition and unfortunately need to go. The, the owner would like to replace the trees, which is always nice to, to see. So I would like a motion to accept the tree commission's recommendations for the trees at 25 North Parsonage and at 80 East Market Street.
So moved.
Discussion.
If they're gonna plant new trees, can they plant them so they're done, not, they'll just grow right up into the layers?
Um, but there will be a discussion, I mean, one of the things that the tree commission has pushed very hard over the years, and one of the reasons why we have some of the permitting process, is that the trees that are underneath the electric wires should fit under the electric wires, so they don't have, they're not getting into that savage pruning situation. I mean, the, the tree commission has been doing this for years. I mean, the, the tree commission has been doing this for years, and it's, it's an overall goal. You don't get, unfortunately, not get the quite majestic trees, but to get functional, nice, beautiful trees that are not savaged by Central Hudson every four years. So, yes, appropriate tree for the appropriate space.
So the tree commission determines what tree?
We do not have a permitting process in, in, in place. It's been discussed whether we wanted to add that.
So now who picks the tree that goes there?
The homeowner does, but usually, usually, they come to the tree commission and talk about, you know, what's good and what's there. And I'm sure members of the tree commission will be offering opinions. We have at one point talked about having a permitting system for trees in the brow, but it was thought that was just getting a little bit too bureaucratic, too much.
That's good.
Yeah. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next on the agenda is a special request from North Center Productions. It's from North Center Production Filming. This is for, I don't know this show. It's called Pretty Little Liars.
No way, really?
Yes.
That's so cool.
So if you know the show, wonderful. But they really, they want, this is within the timeframe, but it's going to happen before next week. Right? So they want to use the Star Parking Lot on 122. The phone, the shooting date is Wednesday, January 12, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. They're going to be using the Mirbo Inn and the Star Parking Lot for their request.
So is the Star Parking Lot, the library?
Library.
Oh, oh, right, sorry.
Sorry, the library. Yeah. So they're not going to be taking up road space. It's a big thing.
I assume they're coordinating with the library, library. And Mirbo?
I didn't ask that question.
Okay.
That seems like the library and...
Do they think you brought the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Do you want to let them know that they need to...
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to? Would you please?
This is a permit for filming within the village municipal.
Correct.
Right. All right. I'd like to make a motion to request, to, to approve the film shoot for Pretty Little Liars on Wednesday, January 12.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Can I just get a, a compensate vote for using this film?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Is Pretty Little Liars production going to compensate the vote?
No.
I think it's in your best interest to...
Normally, we do charge if they're taking up our police time, our village staff time, they're monopolizing, taking away parking spots, that kind of stuff. If they're not, and if they're off-street and don't require us to get engaged, we don't charge.
They like your location, which they, you know, we all do. They could pay a lot of money.
They, they may be paying Mirbo.
I'm sorry, can I...
They may be paying Mirbo if that's where they're, the set they're going to be shooting with.
Yes, but is the Star Library a...
Huh.
Their parking lot. In the past, just, you know, I mean, we want to support the filming industry. We want to bring them in here. We did, several years ago, we were charging them, and guess what happened? They all left. They didn't come back. So now we've adopted another policy that if you're using our resources, we're going to charge you.
I'm just saying, there's some good money.
Yep. That's, that's exactly what we were, we were under before, and they all went to Hudson.
Well, maybe, maybe if they come back a second time, we can, we can approach that topic with them.
You can only bring it up to the location and scout and see. I mean, this is a question.
Good suggestion.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Minutes approval. Minutes approval for 11-9. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 11-9.
Second.
Any discussion?
I haven't read them. I'm going to abstain.
You're going to have to abstain if you didn't read them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Rick.
Trustee Lloyd abstains. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 11:30-21.
Second.
Any discussion?
As amended to your, to your comments, yeah.
Yes, she had a question about who the third person was.
Yep.
It was a question mark, so I answered the question.
Yep.
In terms of the autism awareness support. So that's the only thing I can do. All in favor, say aye.
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 The dyslexic abstains. The dyslexic abstains. Thank you.
Okay. Karen?
Easy for you, isn't it?
Rescue vehicle bond resolution. We have some exciting news here.
We do. I'm just going to remove my mouse if you talk and breathe. All right, so we just got notified that the fire rescue truck may be delivered the first week in February. We were really not, we were really not anticipating it till maybe April, May.
Or delayed due to supply chain, even maybe longer.
Right. So, so with that notification that had just come in like yesterday, or the day, the night, or the end of the day, the day before, I had called our bond counsel, Doug Goodfriend, to prepare a bond resolution. The truck itself has already previously been authorized by the board. So the resolution is subject to permissive referendum for the purchase of a fire rescue vehicle for the village of Reinbeck at a maximum estimated cost of $580,000 and authorizing issuance of $580,000 serial bonds of said village. I'm requesting that the board pass the resolution for the bond and the permissive referendum. That's one part of it. The second part of it is, is to authorize munistat financial advisors at a cost of $1,500 and ORIC not to exceed $7,750 to expedite this bond issue. And with a permissive referendum, we are looking at February 2nd and 3rd to sell, and then February 16th or 17th to close. I'm still working on the exact schedule with them. The, it's going to be like a week or so, like, if, they're just going to hold off on delivery of the truck until like the 7th, 16th or 17th, when the, when the closing is.
Okay.
It's a 20-year.
We want to break it up into two, so correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think I want to make a motion to approve the permissive referendum for looking at February 2nd or February 3rd, you know, and to sell on February 16th or 17th to close.
Right, the whole bond.
The whole bond.
Yep.
Yep.
A motion to approve the bond.
Well, this is a mandatory referendum?
No.
A motion to approve the bond.
Prove the bond.
Prove the bond, okay.
All right. So it goes out, if somebody has a...
Yeah, if somebody wants to.
Right, but it's not, it's automatically, it's not unlike the...
Yeah, we're not going to, we don't have the whole of it. Right? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion?
I mean, this is the same truck we talked about like a year ago, right?
Correct.
Great.
Yep.
Time line up, that's all.
Yeah.
Coming in ahead of schedule.
Does this, was this truck planned to hit the next fiscal year?
Correct, yes.
So it's going to hit this fiscal year a year early?
No, no.
No.
It was not scheduled this fiscal year. It will be scheduled next fiscal year.
Oh, so it's not, it's not?
It's not budgeted for this fiscal year because even if we do it right now, this will be the following fiscal year.
Very good, okay.
Got it. So they're not expecting a payment until...
A year from now, correct.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to have, make another motion that we authorize munistat at $1,500 and ORIC not to exceed $7,750 to expedite this bond issue of $508,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lloyd, Rick. Any discussion?
That cost would be folded into the price of the bond?
No, actually, the, the fire department will pay for that out of their fees non-employees prior to the bond issue.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Karen, very good. Thank you.
Wow.
So I need to get a new truck?
Can't find anything.
Everybody...
Get a new truck four months early.
Early, right? Getting early?
Wish I could get my truck. I get a little truck.
You got a little truck and throw it in the back of some parked truck, you know, and it's quick.
All right, treasures report.
Okay, the treasures report is for the period ending November 30. The tax collector's account ended the month with $985,070.32. The general fund ended the month with $116,207.15. The water fund ended the month with $293,274.33. And the sewer fund ended the month with $571,167.61. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund with prepaid total $339,038. Water, $64,933.12. In the sewer, $36,346.72. And we had an escrow payment of $5,193.
I want to make a motion to accept the budget amendments proposed by...
Or pay the bills.
Yeah, pay the bills. Pay the bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Yes, just took up the vouchers as presented. The monthly operating statement, an operating statement is provided for the revenue and expenditures through December 14 today. Water and wastewater billing and adjustments assigned off by trustee Nunaker are presented for authorization.
I'd make, I'd like to make a motion that we get the adjustments approved as submitted.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Lydia.
I'm going to take it.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, budget amendments. So we have budget amendments. Do you want me to go through each account and line item? Or just total them? In the general fund, we have budget amendments for trees and, and the tree revenue account, and this is to record, allocate the New York State Urban Forestry Grant that we received. So that one is a wash. In the administrative fees non-employees, I'm requesting an increase of $4,500. We had a general code bill higher than anticipated. In the administrative training, I'm requesting an increase of $1,500 for clerk and treasurer courses coming up until the end of the year. Election for fees non-employees, additional election was added, so I'm, and, and we're like $200 over budget on that line item, so I'm requesting $2,500 to go through our regular village election in March. Central garage fees non-employees, increasing that by 1,000. That's over budget because we had a large service contract payment due. And then adding the street compost of $4,260. I'm requesting those come from contingency of $16,491 plus the 4260 that I didn't add on prior to this. Community action, I'm requesting a budget amendment of $10,000, and the police equipment line item for the electronic signboard of $20,098. Those are offset by our federal revenue account for the ARPA, for the ARPA funds. And then $7,000 for streets, equipment, repair, and maintenance, which is $5,000 over budget, and I'm just forecasting 1,000 until the fiscal year end for that. In the water fund, water administrative fees non-employees, $5,500. I think that is as well in the sewer, and that was underbudgeted. A lot goes into that for the accounting service and the SCA bill, so we'll do that now, but then we'll discuss that at budget, a realistic, more realistic budget number for that. Administrative for supplies, $500. Administrative for utilities, $500. I'm requesting to offset that with $4,800 from the state retirement, and then the water attorney line item of $1,700. The state retirement payment was made, and that's a one-time annual payment, so we know that if there's money remaining in that, then it will be remaining in that. So, and the sewers did same line items, just in sewer.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as proposed by CFO.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, and I just have one more, one more item. After confirming with the court clerk, $500 cash bail has been held since December 3 of 2015. After six years, unclaimed exonerated bail becomes the property of the municipality. So I'm just notifying you that this will be recorded in 2701 refunds from prior years. So I just need a resolution to transfer those funds.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of funds for the court.
Second.
All in, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's all.
Thank you.
Who wants to spend that $500?
Yeah, no, you guys have to...
It wasn't...
Get it.
On your line item. Stay in your lane. Okay, police report. This is for the month of November. Total number of incidents in the town, 27. Total number of incidents in the village, 96. Total number of tickets in the town were four. Total number of tickets in the village were 30. Total arrests were zero. Total number of accidents were five. The police did extra coverage for traffic control for brush pickup, which we need. And again, I remind, our brush pickup has ended. Our leaf pickup has ended as of December 1st. But when they were out there, we need to give them police support because it's dangerous, right? Traffic control for barrier removals that were set up for events, the holiday parade that we had, and the truck, which was very well attended as well. I'd like to make a motion to, we'll get through them all. All right. Building planning and zoning.
So for November, the building planning and zoning office brought in just over $15,000. Without an escrow, though, it was just over $11,000. We are at 196 building permits for the first five months of the fiscal year, which I'd like to remind everyone is, in a normal fiscal year, we do about 100 building permits total. So this office remains incredibly busy. Do, in follow-up to a comment by Diane Britton a couple months ago, I've done a bunch of research into the building planning and mostly the building fees for low-income elderly. And I have a proposal that I would like to put on the table and discuss. Basically, there's a real estate tax abatement that low-income elderly can apply for through the town. And there's a very specific income limit and very specific qualifications that you have to provide in order to receive the property tax abatement, all of which are managed through the assessor's office. And I got that list of, of people from the town, and I offset it using the help of Ryan and Karen against people who've applied for building permits this fiscal year. And there were four building permits that were pulled by, by people from that list. Each one was $150 for various things, fence permits, a boiler, a demolition permit for a storm damaged garage, et cetera, et cetera. And I had a long conversation with our building inspector about what would be the appropriate way to perhaps help our low-income elderly with these prices. And we can't update our overall fee schedule halfway through the fiscal year without incurring a lot of scrutiny from the state. And so he suggested that we reduce the cost of this sort of minimum fee, which is $150, from $150 to 50, and offer a rebate check basically to these four homeowners. And then we can catch it now moving forward for anybody who applies for such a permit because we have the list of people. because we have the list of people. And so I would like to make a motion to rebate to the four homeowners that we've identified here, 100 of their $150 building permit fees for a total of $400. And then watch it in the way that Brant does with the water and sewer bills moving forward until the new fiscal year, at which point Ken and I are going to be updating the fee schedule in a holistic way. So that's my motion.
Second.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Is the program you're talking about known as the STAR program? Is that what?
No, the STAR program, actually, the income limit on STAR is $96,000, which is frankly a great deal of money.
It's the senior exemption.
Yeah, this is the, this is the senior exemption. And each village and town votes on a limit. It's anywhere from like $24,000 a year to $36,000 a year. And depending on where you are in that range, you get a certain amount of your property taxes rebated. The village has adopted $32,400 as that income limit. And so basically, all elderly who own or occupy their properties in the village, who earn less than $32,400 a year, qualify for this property tax exemption, the senior exemption. And so that is the list of people that we're looking at. It's 29 people, 28 homeowner, 23 parcels in the village that qualify for this.
How often do we update that threshold?
It's annual. They have to apply for it annually through the town.
It's the town that sets, not the village?
Oh, no, we set that threshold.
How often do we take a look at that number and see if that's still kind of like a living?
So the last time we did it was, I think, three years ago. We went through and did a holistic view at our fee schedule and presented it to the board. And we brought ourselves in alignment at that time with the surrounding communities.
If you'd like, I can take a look when we redo the fee schedule with the new fiscal year.
No, I think she's talking about the senior exemption.
Yeah, yeah, that $32,400.
Wonder if we got $34,200 from, where does that number come from?
Yeah. Oh, that we voted on apparently three years ago as, as the number that we would, that the village would have for the senior exemption. If you'd like, I'm happy to take a look at that for the next fiscal year as part of the fee schedule stuff that I'm going to be working on.
We do that at the time when we do our annual.
Budgeting?
Well, not the budget meeting.
You get the assessment?
No, actually, when we, right up at the beginning of the year, when we, what's I call our meeting?
Reorganization?
The reorganization meeting, that's what we get down.
Oh, okay. Great, right.
The reorg.
Yeah, let me know, Lydia, when you go to look at that senior exemption.
Yeah, I mean, there's like the, the state and the county have just, you know.
They have a recommendation.
They have recommendations. They have the lists of what every town and village in the county does. So you can see what all of the villages, you know, so, yeah, we can take a look at it.
So there's some benchmarks?
Yeah, there's some benchmarking. Absolutely.
How did you determine $50 versus?
So Ken, our building inspector, thought that that was an appropriate amount because it does still take work. So he figured that, you know, there's an acknowledgement that there's inspections to be done, but, you know, at a reduced price. So it doesn't actually cover the amount of time that, it is a loss for the village, but, you know, an appropriate one in this particular case. So he figured, you know, $25 for the time and $25 for the paperwork. That was his thoughts. And that's, you know, what he does in the other municipalities where he works. So there's also that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have also asked a group of very interested, very educated on this particular issue of village residents to pull together into a historic district working group in order to provide a recommendation to me by the end of January on a proposal for the village to discuss amongst us and then in public forum, public hearing, on how to handle at a village level, the expansion of the historic district passed by the state and the federal government, the state last year, the federal government early this year. They, I don't know if you all remember this, but the state and the feds expanded the historic district to include Platt Street, Oak Street, and Mill, Mill Street? And they also expanded the criteria of what counts as a contributing building inside the district to include what they consider to be the modern movement. So buildings, prior, it was buildings built prior to 1930. And this new expansion covers buildings that were built prior to, I believe it was 1968, but I need to look. So the idea behind that is, you know, for historic preservation rules, they're always trying to capture anything that's over 50 years old. So it's just updating the list to that. They did a very holistic review of the whole district. And so the question now is, how do we respond for the, for the overlay district here in the village? You know, so there's multiple ways to skin that cat. We can expand the borders. We can expand the criteria. We can not do any of it. We can do all of it. And so I have asked for the people who are more educated on this issue than I am to do some thinking about it. And I've convened a group of people who are of divergent perspectives, shall we say, to really give me a good idea of what to recommend to you and then to have a conversation with the villages as a whole. So I will let you know how that goes as January unfolds. And then otherwise, for the comp plan, stay tuned, I should have something released this week. And that is building planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Highway.
Okay. In November, the highway participated in removing the outdoor dining barriers that were on East Market Street. Rebuilt and installed a new catch basin on Beach Street. I like to note, everything center clause. The department was very involved in helping to prepare, plan and clean up from center clause, including being there on the day, both parked in their trucks for safety and doing cleanup and other tasks along the day. Replaced fuel truck in Truck 6. Carl Dante did a very good job keeping up with the leaves using the leaf truck. And all those people who did not mix your leaves and your other debris, we thank you. The leaf truck was, came through the season undamaged. There's annual service on Truck 6, the backhoe, some mulch deliveries. Our new truck was delivered from Ruggies. The guys also helped Rhinebeck Response remove the patio furniture from in front of CVS as that contract has expired. Set up this room for, for court and board meetings. Carl Dante sanitized the polling stations during a referendum, a lot of people noticed them, making sure that things are wiped down and get cleaned. And we are, as part of our situation with having it lost, losing the two trucks to fire, we are borrowing a plow truck from the town of Poughkeepsie. And that's been picked up and has already been serviced.
Okay, great.
You said two of the white flags.
Yeah, okay. So earlier, actually, back in the other fiscal year, we established the fact that there would be a series of on-call, basically swing workers available to, to the highway department for even when folks are out or they needed extra, extra hands to, to come in. So we've created the positions, but what we need to do is to codify the salary for the position. So we have hired Quentin Connolly, who's come and joined the highway department, and he's been called in. And he, and he's been working quite hard. Scott really appreciates, appreciates his labor. So I would like to make a resolution that we pay Quentin Connolly $16.50 an hour for his work as a laborer, or part-time swing laborer down at the, for the highway department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Discussion?
I just want to clarify that that's as a subcontractor, the voucher, correct? Okay, good.
Yeah, it doesn't have, okay.
Right, this, no, this person is not, we don't pay benefits, we don't pay, this person basically is a contractor delivering.
So my only, and you and I have discussed this, my only concern is, the past person that we brought in to this position, we paid 15, okay? And then our only, last permanent hire, we're paying 7, we started at 17. So we're bringing in somebody at 1650, right? Which is above what we paid the last person, but really close to what we're paying our...
Our full-time laborer.
Our full-time, our full-time CDL working laborer in the highway department.
No, not, not the CDL.
Yeah, he is, he drives.
Permit, he's got a permit.
Permit, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
With benefits and.
Yeah, with, with full benefits and all the other.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'm just saying, it's a very close margin, and once you set this precedence, then going forward, you're stuck in a precedence.
I think we have to realize that we, there is some level of inflation. I think that this is a reasonable wage for our working guys to come in and help out. We're not paying any, we're not paying any benefits. So I think it's a respectable amount for respectable labor.
Is there any sort of, I mean, just last winter, we were paying someone $15 an hour for the same work, right?
Spring.
Spring, okay. So six months ago, we were paying someone $15 an hour for this work. Is there any, you know, sort of comp, comps reason comparables? Why, is this more, is this less than what other municipalities in the area are doing for their, for their sort of contract labors?
It's been a while that we've looked at that, so I don't, I don't have, we took a look at it like two, three years ago, and we were pretty much right around or lower than where most other people were at.
Yeah, and I remember we had a long conversation last, during the budget season, but when we sort of right-sized everybody's pay rates, what was it, two years ago now? Was that $15 an hour person included in that right sizing?
No.
They were not.
Okay.
Because they're not, they were not, just not employees.
Yeah, they were non-직원 employees, I get that.
I mean, he's basically doing the same job as, as, as every person making $17 an hour, who's getting full benefits.
Right, oh, yeah, full-time employee, okay.
It's just that we only have X amount of dollars in the budget.
Yeah.
To be budget conscious.
Well, we have, right, we do, I mean, we have, we have budgeted for these.
We have budgeted.
We have budgeted for these, and we do monitor the amount of hours that this person, you know, works. So, you know, we're within our budget. And as I said, a hard-working guy, respectable, respectable pay for a respectable job.
I guess I would like to counter, I would like to counter with 16.
Correct.
Just only because I think there is a difference between people that we need and hire in full time and what we bring in and who's on call. I want to pay people a reasonable wage, right? And I think we're, I'm bandering over 50 cents, I agree, but I think the precedence for me is that we're going for the future as well.
Yeah, I think fast food people are getting 15 bucks an hour now in this area, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Fast food workers are getting 15 in this area.
Yeah, we should be above that.
Well, no, I think we should be above that.
Yeah, that's the New York State living wage, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think Dunkin' Donuts, you can make $15 an hour. I mean, these guys are, I would just go with 1650, especially if we already made an overture. Kind of hard to turn back, but.
We haven't made an overture.
We haven't, we haven't.
Oh, you, you.
We've not, we've not.
It's never been talked about at all.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
No, we need to, we need to resolve this tonight. So that we can pay them.
Um, is this, just out of curiosity, I mean, we have the problem a lot where, you know, guys are out on vacation and then other guys are pulling overtime in order to cover the slack and all the rest of it. So is this person, when everybody's on full, he is also going to be there? Is this for like help with plowing and things like that? Or is this to cover when somebody's on vacation?
You know, it's, it's all, it's basically swing labor.
Yeah, I get that.
When, when, when there's another set of hands that are needed, either because somebody's out or there's a particular job that's going on that requires another set of hands.
Okay.
We just used him when Scott was out.
Yeah, okay.
My, and it was useful.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I hear that, right.
I mean, I, I mean, I, I'm going to argue for the extra 50 cents. I think things have, we all know things have gotten pretty expensive around us. You know, your fuel auto bill, groceries are going up. I think that's a, for somebody who's working, I think it's a reasonable, a reasonable starting wage.
And this one is not subject to union negotiated increases?
No, no, this person is completely outside of our, outside of that system.
It's a contract.
It's a 1099.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can keep him at 1650.
Yeah, we can sort of see how an extra kind of tallies out.
Yeah. Are we drawing a limit? All in favor of 1650, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Road repair paving bill.
Okay. So I am sorry to say that the village got socked with a very high pothole paving bill. We initially contracted for this service way back in June, and it wasn't performed until November. And even then, we had to pay additional, additional costs because of price of asphalt and a whole bunch of other costs line up. So we've received this bill, but I think it's not itemized properly for the amount of work that was done, for the, for the kind of work that was done. And also, I'm very concerned that we're paying a penalty, basically because they were so slow that now they had to go get asphalt from, from different people. So I've received this bill, but I'm going to be talking to the contractor and trying to negotiate what I think is a fairer, a fairer settlement. Because this is, we had paid for this sort of work in, in the past, and it ran at about the $30,000, $30,000. And we had budgeted $40,000 for this, for this pothole work, and this came in above that. So this bill will not be in our vouchers for this, for this cycle until I have a discussion with, with the company.
I mean, one thing is, we're going to be around for a long time as a village, and we have good credit, and we're going to be a repeat customer, so.
This is, this is a repeat contractor.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I mean.
I have to say, I have to say that I, I'm very disappointed in this contractor. We were given repeated promises for the timing and the completion of this job, and they were repeatedly broken. So I, I.
And now we have to pay a premium for that?
And now we have to pay a premium for that.
Yeah.
So I mean, I feel like if somebody's, if somebody's been a, you know, they have to be responsible and they're part of the, on their part of the equation too. I mean, we literally, I hate to say it, we literally spent times not getting returned phone calls, and that's not really acceptable. So, you know, you know how hard it's been to get a contractor.
It's been strange with asphalt contractors this year, they just have bigger jobs.
Well, we looked initially, we had looked at asking, we, when we did our paving, our paving of on Kramer and Orchard Streets, we have, there are basically three payers in the area, and we asked them if they would be interested in participating in this job. And they're like, nope, we're too busy, and we just, we have bigger fish to fry. So we were only able to find this one contractor who's done this in the past, but he really sucked us in the end, and we're going to have to have a discussion about it.
Wow, okay.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, water department.
So can I do the wastewater first?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Because it says EFC Waterline Project, but it was really the EFC wastewater, which was the development. So what happened is, we did engineering reports for both the water and the wastewater department, and they came up with a 10-year capital plan for plant improvements. In wastewater, we submitted, our engineer, Delaware Engineering submitted to be on the intended use plan, which is a listing for 0% financing. It's in, with the Environmental Services Facilities Corp. They came up with about $4.6 million in potential improvements to the, to the wastewater plant, which was our part, our 10-year capital plan. We don't have to do all that, we can take bits and pieces of it, we can do it all. But anyway, Gary got a letter, and it says, I'm going to read it. "I'm pleased to inform you that the village of Rhinebeck is eligible for clean water, state revolving fund, CWS RF, interest-free financing for all or a portion of the proposed clean water projects referenced above. This hardship determination is based on your median household income and population as detailed in the CWS RF hardship financing and grant eligibility policy," which I couldn't find. "But if you have not already done so, you must submit an acceptable..." "But if you have not already done so, you must submit an acceptable CWSRF financing application by no later than March 1st, 2023, blah, blah, blah." "We have to follow, if with any plan improvements, the Davis Bacon Federal Prevailing Wage Schedule, which of course we know, American Iron and Steel provisions, minority women, business enterprise, equal opportunity." There's a benchmark for, for minority contractors. This is huge, this is interest-free money, and I checked with Delaware Engineering, and it's for real, like I know, I said, what's the catch? And they're like, no, this is, this is the real enchilada here. So, for example, I, I said, I ran three million dollars over thirty years on a mortgage calculator, and if, if it's interest-free, you just take three hundred, you take three million divided by three hundred and sixty payments, and it's eight, eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars a month. If you had a three percent interest, which is what we've had in the past, it's like twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. So you could, you would be saving like forty-three hundred dollars a month
Amazing.
for thirty years.
Amazing.
Which is like a one point five, this is a grant, basically, I mean, it's the equivalent of a grant. It's like getting a thirty-three percent grant, at least, maybe more. So, the next step is, we need to develop a project, we need, I need to sit with the engineers and with Brian Baccamo and find out what's on the wish list, what, what are, and that's why I asked you about, Lydia, about affordable housing potential units. We need to find out, you know, what our plans are, and compare that with the engineering report, which I'm sure you guys all still have this by your, your nightstand.
Yep.
But, because I gave this to you all like six months ago. Some of the things that we came up with was the bar screen when the effluent comes in the plant. The UV needs to be redone because we're down to like four ballast, and that whole UV system needs to be replaced. The electric service needs to be, it's called a arc flash study, because our electric service may not be proper. The sludge holding tank is half the size it probably should be, and there's all sorts of things, so
Could we, could we include like a composting thing in that, or is that not, like, it needs to be more shovel-ready than that?
Well, the reason, exactly, it needs to be more shovel-ready, because the reason why we got this is because we hit the benchmark income level, we were at the top of that, not surprisingly, but it was still, was within the hardship benchmark income level from 2017 census data.
We should move on that, then.
Yeah, we should move on that before they count all the New Yorkers who just moved up here.
Yeah, yeah, I thought, that was one of my questions. The, the fact that the finished water stream goes into, what is it, the Rhinebeck Hill? That was a big environmental piece that gave us points, and it was the completeness and professionalism the engineering report gave us some points, so
That's great news.
Yeah, so that's
So are you gonna sort of come back with a proposal?
I'm gonna come back with a scope, you know, and you guys can contribute, and you've all got your binders, and I'm sure that you haven't lost track of.
Highlighted another thing. Great, that's amazing, thanks, thanks, Grant.
Yeah, and then the bad news is that we got, it's kind of bad news, but it's kind of good news too, we got our sludge, we did go out to bid on the sludge hauling contract, and we did it internally, which is great, because Martina did it, and, you know, she did the public announcement and wrote the, the bid stuff, and we got one bidder. And it was H.I. Stone and Son, which is actually our hauler now, we, we use Veolia now, but H.I. Stone is the hauler for Veolia, so it's like we cut out the, the middleman, and it, the price went up a lot, anyway. So, but the good, so what we're paying now is a hundred and thirty-three dollars per wet ton to get our sludge removed, right? They came in at two hundred and fourteen dollars per wet ton. So, I called the, the principal, one of the principals, and I asked him why it was so expensive, and he said, "Brian, has your, where? We've been the, the hauler through Veolia for this contract for years. We solicited many disposal sites for this project, and the only possibility was Denali's compost facility in Hillburn, New York, right? The haul rate combined with the expensive disposal costs, fuel costs, and many other costs out of our control have resulted in the current pricing we have offered to the Village of Rhinebeck. At this time, there are no visible viable options for this sludge. Veolia is at full capacity, as is Sinagro and MDC. Those are the three incinerator plants in the state of Connecticut, and they're all saying no."
And, and it's not just us, it's like the town of Newburgh.
This is happening everywhere.
Yeah, so this is actually a really good timing to get in a composting facility.
Yeah, so, there may be other potential options if your sludge content can get consistently over sixteen. We have a pretty sophisticated screw press, but our sludge levels have been like fourteen, so we need to squeeze more water out of it. And, so we'll work on that, and I actually contacted Robert Flores of Delaware to help us with the quality of our sludge. So, I would like to make a motion to, and the good news is, it's, this is composting, so we're not incinerating.
Yeah.
The hauler used to be like ten miles from the incinerator plant, so that's probably why we were at a hundred and thirty-three dollars, so the market
Did you ask me, was the difference between composting and non-composting?
And what was?
The tip fee, like the tip fee, is that?
Yeah, the tip fee is higher, but there's, it's kind of an illusory comparison because we're not
Is it included in this?
Yeah, but we can't find an incinerator that will take, that would take us, at least not with, with this process. These people really know the industry, so
They'll guide you, you just need a much drier sludge, wait if you're gonna
Yeah, yes.
So we need to change our process a little bit.
Well, and actually, if we're drying it out more on this end, then theoretically, there's gonna, there's just gonna be less volume, and so even though it's going to
We're gonna get it, it'll go down a little bit, yeah, he goes, if you get it up five percent, we'll talk, and then it'll be cheaper, you know, so, but it's not gonna, it's just gonna be more expensive, and it, maybe we can figure out an independent way of composting on-site or here and home.
How long is this contract for?
It's a one-year proposal, oh, and I would like to make this approval subject to Rich approving the, you know, the bid package. Because there's some, you know, he's gotta look at the, the fine print, her attorney. So, sorry, didn't have better news on that.
You know, bottom line is, I don't think we have a chance.
Right, and then we're not burning, so it's echo
Yeah, but what, what's been happening is it's being driven to Connecticut, which I think is a hundred, a hundred twenty-five mile
Yeah, but he's right next to Connecticut, so this is, he's got actually to drive the
He's gonna go to Denali and then back home. But, but yeah, it's being incinerated, right? And so here, it's being brought to a composting facility where they make it into, into compost.
Which is great.
Which is awesome. So I'm, I'm, I know it's
So this is like a, to, you're not asking us to approve this, because Rich needs to look at it?
I would like to, you guys do approve it, subject to Rich's, yeah, to Rich's, not
I second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Um, where are we with the water rate study?
I haven't, I didn't have a chance to talk to Brandy.
Okay, all right.
No, somebody else, our DPW is
So, I, I've been working with the, the guy at, I forget, it's with Michael at, at Ty &amp; Vaughn, and it was just a matter of getting a format of our customer list and all of our different rates to him, so I can reach back out, I worked with SCA, our billing software, to try and just get it in a, a format that
They need.
he can use to, to decipher, but I will follow up with him. This is about a week ago, so we've been on it.
No, no worries, thank you.
So, I think that's all I have for wastewater. With water, they clean the settlement tanks, that's the, that's like the backwash from the flock tank, et cetera. They do that right before it gets really cold. The, all the water main break, road damage has been patched, we did find, Briggs did that. The tank barrier is complete over at the Pilot Hill Storage Tank.
Oh, great, it worked?
Yeah.
Great.
It looks nice.
Yay.
They found a huge rock, so they just put it right in front, so
Oh, how lovely.
The Stone of Hialee Road.
It's a nice landscape.
I, I, I hope the neighbors find it more attractive than the, than the, than the tank.
Brassmere negotiations involving Ty &amp; Vaughn are ongoing. This, we ordered the surveying for the Center Street Waterline, right in front of the Village Hall and Road Resurfacing Project. And we have, don't forget, we have submitted for an EFC grant request on plant modifications for the water department. Now, they just haven't gotten to, it doesn't, my insider tells me, they haven't started processing those yet, so stay tuned. I could have more good news, fingers crossed.
Yeah, the last time we went out, we had a discussion with the State Department of Health, who can give you comments based on your proposal, and that was very helpful. And I think was one of the great things that helped us move us forward, I'm wondering if we should set that conference up again.
So I'd like to check with the engineers at Delaware first, and if we have a private, you know, like a side discussion like whether we would do the, talk to the
I just found that the more we sell it, the better we are, right?
Yeah, let me ask them.
Okay.
Yeah. They have a really fantastic batting average.
And actually, that recommendation came to our representative, Kevin Cahill.
Yeah.
Which
Which you and I met
Yeah, when we met.
Yeah. We, it's not which, what is it, who, whom you and I met with, or? With whom we met.
Okay, moving on, environment, we might as well punch yourselves.
I know.
All right, Vanessa, environment.
Okay, a couple of updates, thank you for approving the compost pilot. I'm excited that our wastewater treatment plant sludge will be composted as well. Also, an update here, our Flex Tech Energy Study at Village Hall has been approved, so that's moving forward. Energy benchmarking, you know, Chrissy's making progress with the tool, she did training with our Clean Energy Communities Representative. And it'd be great to get that data soon, because in the new year, I plan on doing our annual sustainability report, and it'd be great to have some reporting included. Our natural resources inventory, last call for feedback on those maps. They're all available on the climate smart rhinebeck.org website, the public can check them out as well. I have links to the town maps and the village-specific maps, and they're, they're really beautiful. And the next phase of this project will be actually creating a written narrative report that rides alongside these maps, interpreting the maps, explaining a little bit what you see and what you find in the maps. And in addition to writing that material, we had this idea of actually putting on a photo contest to put a call out to the public to provide photography, illustrating all of the natural elements of Rhinebeck. And so I wanted to see, you know, if this would be something that we should move forward with. I think it would be fun for the community, they will get credit for their photography, if included in the final report.
Why not?
Why not, right?
Why not? You know, I don't see a reasonable, I don't
Yeah, I think it could be really fun, so more news on that soon. And speaking of glyphosate and its use, I'm looking into whether there exists already an effort to regulate companies misleading use of the term organic on these, on these chemicals, either at the federal or the state level, because it's really sort of misleading and what's the term when you, when it's misleading marketing, I forget what it's called.
False advertising.
False, it's false advertising, to call it organic. And, yeah, so it's, it's something that I'm looking into. But yeah, as a reminder, we did pass a policy, and we won't be using glyphosate on village properties unless by someone who's been certified by the DEC. And then finally, we had our Maris presentation, and we'll be continuing that work with Professor Feldman in the spring. So I'm sure in the new year, we'll be talking about that.
Right.
That's it for now.
Thank you. Okay, fire. First thing I'd like to talk about is, the Fire Department in December has an election of officers. And Board of Directors by majority vote has approved the nominations for officers in the Rhinebeck Fire Department, okay? And then we need to vote on to approve. So the list is as follows, and I don't think you're gonna be surprised by any of this. Chief, Kyle Amy. Assistant Chief, Brian Knapp. First Captain, Peter Fraley. Second Captain, Todd Leary. First Lieutenant, Sheldon Teeter. Second Lieutenant, Blake McMichael. EMS Captain, Chrissy Amy. EMS First Lieutenant, Jeff Cotter. EMS Second Lieutenant, Talal Javari. Fire Police Captain, Tim Day. And then the civil officers are President, Mark Brown. Vice President, Sonny Freeman. Treasurer, John Imperato. Secretary, Walt Cotter. Financial Secretary, Leanne Pitcher. First Board of Director, Rick Dorr. And Second Board of Director, Sandy Williams. This is submitted by, by Mark Brown, President of Rhinebeck Fire Department, Inc. I'd like to make a motion to thank all of those who are serving in our fire department in all capacities, those as elected officers, and those who are contributing as a volunteer. We couldn't get along without them, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the nominations.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia, any discussion?
Already, thank you.
Already, thank you, well done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Fire Department, and EMS. Second.
Do we vote?
Vote, we vote.
Sorry, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right. During Cinderclaws, this is the Fire Department report, for the month of November, a hundred and fourteen fire EMS calls. During Cinderclaws, they had twenty-six members on standby from nine AM to eight-thirty. During that time, they had one injury, it was a finger injury, a pinch. An arm, an RMA was obtained with no transport. Also, reporting a propane order on West Market Street in the area of Garden Street. The odor was dissipated upon arrival, and no further investigation was required. As I just discovered, the 2022 election of officers have been finalized, and was sent to myself for village approval, which we've approved. And the Rhinebeck Intercut Club is working extremely hard, they were out here during Cinderclaws as well, to work with the Frost Foundation on their fundraising efforts for the new ambulance. And the new rescue truck, as we heard earlier, is coming in early, and thank, we're, we're very thankful for that. It's really scheduled for the end of the month for final completion and approval, so that's why we have to move forward. So thank you to the Fire Department. Committee reports, the only one is a tree.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Yes, so I'd just like to give an update, the Tree Commission did its fall 2021 tree planting, and twenty trees were planted at fifteen sites on Livingston, Chestnut Beach, and South Barson Streets, Trinity Place, and in the Lions Mini Park. This is done with crews of four to six volunteers, who received nothing more than a T-shirt. And I would like, just since they do that, I'd like to read off their names. Walter Cotter, who distributed trees and stakes, Tom Johnson from our Highway Department, Doug Holes had delivered mulch, Nick Crawford, who's the Chair of our, of our commission, Vanessa Bertozzi, Carly Fracoli, Andrew Hunter, Joseph Rivera Ramos, Romelo Ortiz, Connie Loan, Takachas, Christiane Taverner, Jamie Derbyshire, myself and my wife, Joyce Messenger, Dodd Crane, Mary Burns, Robert Dubois, Umberto Guero, Pat Evans, Kathleen Evans, and their daughter Addison, and Michael Barker. So, all these people put a lot of sweat equity into making the village a more beautiful place, and this has been one of the great successes of Rhinebeck, and we hope to continue it. We also had a brief thank you to members of the Tree Commission and to the Frost Foundation, which had donated or had granted us money to do a, a survey and do a management plan for the village trees. So in Legion Park, on November twentieth, we had a quick ceremony and thank you by a newly-planted holly tree, which you'll see, that's gonna be one of two which are planted, and that was planted that's going to be one of two, which are planted, and that was planted with a grant that Karen described earlier. And that grant is given to communities that are especially active in the forefront of planting and maintaining the urban forest. So, that was just a little chance to say thank you. I hope you guys saw the, the pictures that were posted. We had a very good time. There was also a Tree Inventory and Management Plan presentation to the Village Board at our, at our last meeting and I believe that that should be up online for, from David Resource Group. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. As always, I'd like to recognize personnel anniversaries and I'm happy to say that Deputy Clerk Chrissy Dedu, 12 years. Congratulations, Chrissy. Thank you for being here. And Officer in Charge, Sergeant Peter Dunn, with 20 years.
Wow.
How about that, right? Congratulations to them. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employee personnel issues.
Second.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion and the executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our last meeting of the year. Happy holidays to everybody. See you next year.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.